Welcome everyone to San Rafael City Council Meeting for Monday, August 16. I will request the city clerk to call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy is absent. Councilmember Hill?
Here.
Councilmember Kurtz?
Here.
Councilmember Yenan Scalotti?
Here.
Mayor Kate?
President, thank you. I'll invite the city attorney to report out on the closed session we just held.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Kate, members of the council, staff, and members of the community. Reportable action was taken in closed session this evening. The city council voted to approve a settlement in the pending case of Carl Bracy versus City of San Rafael et al. And the terms of the settlement are that the city will pay the sum of $29,500 in exchange for the plaintiff's dismissal of the case with prejudice and release of all claims. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'd like to open the meeting by welcoming everybody. And if you're new to watching a council meeting, all these faces on the screen, I'm actually looking and I see both staff and I see community members, which is awesome. We have a good agenda tonight, so I think some folks are on for the agenda items that are later. And it's really to remind each other and to show that we are in this together. And it's thanks to the staff that keeps the city working so wonderfully well every single day. So it's always nice to see your faces. We will get back into the chambers. We do see that Thomas is in the chambers. They're empty, but they will be full again. So thank you. Really wanted to comment on the fact that we have hazy skies and super dry hills. I'm sure as we drive around, we are reminded that climate change is here. And last week, I'm sure all of you had read in the IJ or whatever publication you're reading that the UN released their updated climate report. And there's a key takeaway. It's a really long report. I haven't read all of it, but they have a great sentence that I want to share. So I'm quoting this, "Climate change is widespread, rapid, and intensifying." So in San Rafael, our recently adopted general plan, as well as our climate change action plan, really outlines and looks at what we're going to be doing here locally in San Rafael in response to our changing climate. Right now, and there will be more on this later on tonight's agenda, there are two things that everyone can do as a community member, wildfire prevention and conserving water. We'll be hearing more about wildfire prevention this evening. And regarding conserving water, go to our
Recording in progress.
Or to MMWD, and you can learn more about how to conserve water. We are in it together, and as residents, we all need to do what we can. So thank you for doing your part. In addition, this is a big week in Marin County. Students go back to school. So I think it's a lot of probably sleepless nights, maybe for students and for parents as they get ready for the new normal of school during COVID. And we are all glad that we're reaching this milestone and that things will become a little bit more normal. But as a reminder, because students are going to physically be going to school, they're going to be riding their bikes, they're going to be walking. I want to remind all the drivers, each other, tell your neighbors, let's beware as we are out there in our cars about these additional cyclists and pedestrians, and let's slow down and not drive quite as fast. We want to keep people safe as we get back into the school year. So in closing, we include a land acknowledgement as part of these remarks, as it honors the original indigenous people who have lived and are living today in San Rafael. This city is traditionally home to the Coast Miwauk people, and we thank the original caretakers of this land and honor their continuing involvement in stewardship practices that benefit us all. So welcome, everyone. We have a great meeting ahead, and I will turn it over to the city clerk so the public can know how to participate.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. At this time, I would like to ask staff and our guests to turn off their cameras. Thank you. This meeting is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube, and viewers can provide comments by telephone by calling 669-900-9128 and using the meeting ID 899-2635-9885 pound. Or they can comment and watch directly through Zoom using the link on the agenda. Please note that we're no longer accepting public comment through YouTube. If you are commenting over the telephone, please press star nine when Mayor Kate opens the public comment period. Once you've heard a notification that the host is inviting you to speak, you'll need to press star six to unmute yourself. If you're commenting through Zoom, please use the raised hand feature and let us know that you would like to speak, and we'll let you know when it's time to be to unmute. If you experience any technical difficulties, please email us at city.clerk@cityofsanrefel.org. And I've posted that email address to the Zoom chat. Also, closed captioning is available for this meeting, and that link has been included in the Zoom chat as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Are there any comments from the public on topics or any topics not on tonight's agenda?
So once again, if you're calling in through Zoom, please press star nine to raise your hand to provide public comments or use the raised hand feature on Zoom. Each speaker will have two minutes to provide public comments, and then they will be muted once time has elapsed. And once again, if you experience any technical difficulties, please email me at city.clerk@cityofsanrefel.org. I'm going to give everyone up. We've got a speaker. She unraised her hand. I'm going to give her, give everyone about 10 seconds. Once again, you'll either be pressing star nine or using the raised hand feature. I see no public comment.
Thank you, City Clerk. So we have the Assistant City Manager to give a report. Our city manager is on a mini sabbatical, so welcome, Assistant City Manager Lilovich. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Good evening, council members. I'm Christina Lilovich, Assistant City Manager. I'm very happy to be here tonight to provide you this report on behalf of our CM City Manager, who is taking some well-deserved time off with his family. So just a couple of quick things to to update both the council members and the community on. I have a COVID-19 update. I received some new data from Dr. Willis today with updated case rate data. Thomas is going to share the screen. Gosh, that was a miracle. Thank you, Thomas. But now I've lost my talking points. Hold on one second. Okay, so if you see this chart and you look over to the right, this is data as of yesterday. You'll see it like a little a slight dip down in our case rates. Dr. Willis's interpretation of this data from him just this afternoon is he's saying that we're seeing fewer new case rates per day than this time last week. However, rates of transmission in the community are still quite high. So he's making reference to the old state tier framework in which if we were still under that framework, we'd still be in the purple tier. He said, we still really need to exercise caution. It's too early to tell, but this current dataset is indicating that we're possibly starting to plateau. Although it was 80 new cases last week, it's 60 new cases as of yesterday, but today there was 70 new cases reported. So you can see it's it's not really clear exactly where this is trending yet. I also just wanted to let everyone know that all the Marin County leaders, city managers, and county administrators met with Dr. Willis this afternoon. Dr. Willis is forecasting a potential for a new public health order to come out this week, so stay tuned for that. Thomas, you can stop sharing. I'm going to switch back over to another topic now. So rental assistance update from the county. I wanted to, there's some new numbers that have come out, so I wanted to let everyone know what what the current statistics are. There's a total of $33.5 million in rental assistance in total of all the funding sources that have been awarded to Marin County. The county, as of the end of July 2021, has issued 6.5 million in rental assistance payments, which have been made to 469 households in Marin County. There's another 13.6 million that's committed to applications that are currently in process. And there are 15 full-time staff dedicated to the program, providing technical support and processing those applications as quickly as possible. The county is continually evaluating the program for work through workflow, process improvements, and software improvements to keep trying to supporting as many residents with that rental assistance as possible. And then I also just wanted to provide an update. The city's eviction moratorium is set to expire at the end of September, and there's a new law that was passed, AB 832, where the state is preempting our ability at a local level to implement or extend that eviction moratorium again until March of 2022. Lastly, I wanted to provide an update. Measure A, which is the quarter cent sales tax that supports parks, open space, and agricultural lands across Marin, is set to also expire this next year. The county of Marin is working towards putting a potential extension of Measure A on the ballot, and they're looking for resident feedback. Particularly, they've launched a community survey. I took it today. It took about five minutes, and I encouraged everyone to participate. I couldn't figure, we couldn't put the link in the chat here on YouTube, so bear with me. I'm going to read the link to you. It's on the Marin County Parks website, so if you go to www.marincountyparks.org forward slash projects plans forward slash 2021 dash community dash survey. So please, everybody, take a few minutes and participate in that survey if you have feedback to offer. And that concludes my report, Mayor Kate.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager Lilovich. Nice to have you here. So council member reports. Summer has been a little bit quieter, but I know we've still been out and about. Councilmember Kurtz, we'll start with you.
Thank you. And just to share, I am sitting in my car. I'm actually in Boulder, Colorado, helping my son move in for college in person, so excited about that. So if you have, wonder why it's going, what's going on with me right now, that's where I'm at. Just one, a couple of the meetings and activities that I've been involved in this last couple of weeks. And we're going to be hearing a lot more about this this evening, which is the Social Justice Community Art Project. And I just want to give a shout out to to the staff, and we'll be talking more about this, but the amount of community engagement with the homeowners associations as well as others. So we'll be talking more about that. Tended the Marin Homeless Policy Steering Committee. I'm going to be on the board for the ranking and review process, and we'll be sharing more about that information about that whole process and what's happening in the next couple of weeks. The, I participated in the Economic Development Subcommittee, and we are working with the chamber, sort of thinking about the idea of can we do something similar for the businesses in North San Rafael that the chamber did with the East San Rafael businesses of how do, how do we establish the, that type of network? So trying to leverage some of that information. The one that I'm really excited about coming up is the work that we're doing with the Age Friendly Committee. We are partnering with CERT and San Rafael Fire Department, specifically with Quinn. And we'll have a table on Fourth Street on Thursdays and Fridays. We'll be handing out emergency preparedness information as well as promoting alerts for, to sign up for Alert Marin and Nixal. So that will be really great. So if everyone can, you know, come stop by, if you don't have your alerts, we'll have that information for you. And I think that is it for right now.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz? Councilmember Hill?
Thank you, Mayor Kate. I attended this afternoon the Ad Hoc Green Microgrid Solutions Policymakers Group. This is run by Supervisor Connolly and Supervisor Redoni was in attendance today, as well as Councilmember Sashi McEntee from Mill Valley. We were presented today by Dan Dymavich from Grid Alternatives. This is an organization that seeks to deliver solar in a sustainable way to our community, mostly to underserved community members. Gave a readout on really the challenges of getting microgrid instances set up inside of the community. And I'm looking forward to engaging further to really understand and assess how we can make that real inside of not just San Rafael, but in the larger Marin. That's all I have to report for this week. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Micah?
Yeah, good evening, everybody. It's been pretty quiet, but the, the one thing that I really loved was last Saturday, I went to the grand opening of the De Colores Children's Center and Family and Safety Net Services Hub by Community Action Marine. They are going to be serving children ages zero to five and their families. I think it's going to be an amazing asset to, for our community, especially serving the canal families. It is in 1123 Court Street in San Rafael, so it's very, is in the back of samples and really excited for this opportunity. So that's my report for today. Thank you.
Thank you. And then many of us, and maybe all of us, two weeks ago, we attended or participated in National Night Out, which was organized by San Rafael Police Department. Shout out to the team that made that happen, and it was both police officers, as well as I think there was a fire truck that went around. And there were, there were a good number of neighborhoods participating, not the numbers we've seen in years past, but I'm sure that's due to COVID. The people that did participate, I think neighbors are really excited to see each other. That's the whole point, National Night Out, to connect with your neighbors and to connect with your community. So that was wonderful, and there were some great, some great cookouts. That's all I can say. I ate a lot of cookies. That was two weeks ago. Tonight, we will be talking more about our public art process. And we did have the grand opening of the one in the Canal Neighborhood at 3301 Kerner. The ribbon cutting, I think that was two weeks ago, and it was incredible. You can drive by there. There's both the one that's up on the building, and then there's a mobile shower that's in front, and it has youth art on it, and it is just the kind of beauty and transforming an outdoor space in a really amazing way. So there's two parts to the public art process, as we've talked about, two projects, and that, that one has been completed. We look forward to talking about the second one tonight. And then finally, we had the Canal Policy Working Group. This group has been meeting since May of last year, May or June of last year. It's the city, the county, and community-based organizations talking about everything from rental assistance, which city manager, Assistant City Manager Lilovich talked about. That's really through the county, but how do, how can the city continue to support the county in those efforts? So it's been about rental assistance. It's about continued testing and, of course, vaccination availability. And if you recall, the city, we've continued to approve having the closure of the street in the Canal Neighborhood to enhance vaccination access. So so as always, even though it's quiet in August a little bit, as people are getting ready for school to start, there's still a lot going on. So thank you to all for what you've been up to. With that, we will move to the consent calendar. Are there any items that you would like to hold from the consent agenda? Okay, see none. I will open it to public comment. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you. To comment on Zoom, please use the raised hand feature. And if you're commenting over the phone, please press star nine. Once you've heard a notification that the host is inviting you to speak, you can press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker will have two minutes to provide public comment, and then they will be, they will be muted once time has elapsed. I'm going to give everyone about 10 seconds to raise their hands. I currently see no hands raised. So once again, you want to press star nine or use the raised hand feature, and these are for consent calendar items. I see no public comment.
Thank you, City Clerk. I will bring it back to the council. I'll close the public comment and bring it back to the council for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent of calendar.
There's a second?
Second.
Moved in second. And roll call, please.
Councilmember Hill?
Hi.
Councilmember Kurtz?
Hi.
Councilmember Yenan Scalotti?
Hi.
Mayor Kate?
Hi. That motion carries for zero. Thank you. Our first agenda item is what I had referred to, and as well as Councilmember Kurtz, the San Rafael Social Justice Community Art Group Proposal for a Public Installation. So I will ask staff, somebody is going to talk to us about this?
Mayor Kate?
Yes.
Can you hear me? This is Assistant City Manager Lilovich. Madam City Clerk, I can't start my video. It's telling.
There we go.
Okay, and I'd just like to start off by asking my fellow team members who are co-presenting with me tonight to please go ahead and turn on your cameras. So we're here as a team together. It's a good way to, to start actually with this conversation, as this has been an incredibly unique community and community partner collaboration. I feel the need to start with a few thank yous before we go into the presentation. I want to kind of introduce our team to you. And so we have Kristin Jacobson, I'm just going left or right on my screen. Kristin Jacobson is with Youth and Arts and is a a co-sponsor of the Community Brooks Group Project. Damian Ayobio, did I say that right, Damian? I hope so. Damian is a member of the community group, the Social Justice Community Group, and is going to be presenting on behalf of the group tonight. Orin Carpenter is the lead artist on the project, and he is joined by Owen Martinez Alejandra, who's also a youth lead artist on the project. I want to just make, make a few quick mentions. Lorenzo Jones, whose face isn't on screen because he's not presenting tonight, but I believe he's on the call and has been a key contributor to this work, has been facilitating the community group and helping both the community group and the city and our partners really configure out and iterate on this public art program that I'm going to speak a little bit on before I turn it over to everybody else to talk about the particular project. I also want to recognize Thomas Wong, who has done an incredible job providing a lot of support to the community group and to the process and the project. And there's many others. There, the community group is a dozen plus of committed community members who have been meeting and doing community engagement and collaborating on this, many, many meetings, many, many of their own personal time and into the, into the hours and into the evening, really putting their heart and soul into this project. So I really wanted to start off with all of the, all of that acknowledgement. And then Thomas, would you mind running the slide too, so I can? I'm just going to briefly speak to the pilot public art program, which is kind of the city's role in this. On this past February 16th, the city council approved an ordinance that would exempt and create a public art process, but it would exempt kind of the, the longer, more laborious environmental and design review process for public art projects, and also waived the $8,500 fee in an effort to try to provide and create more of an opportunity for public art to, to come up. And as Mayor Kate mentioned, the Canal Arts Initiative Project and this San Rafael Social Justice Community Art Project were the two projects that we have been facilitating through this pilot public art program. So an advisory group was formed. As you see, it's got a great representation from both the community and art representatives. We have a member of the Planning Commission and Design Review Board, one park and rec commissioner for this particular project, since the project is being proposed at Arbor Park, and a representative with expertise in diversity, equity, and inclusion. I do also want to recognize and appreciate those individuals for their time. They've met now a few times with us to provide feedback and ask questions before bringing this project forward. That, the role of that committee really is to create a forum for public input and for those individuals to ask questions. And they've been incredibly supportive of this project, of the concept, and and Orin most recently presented the image that you're going to see this evening that's being proposed by, by the community group. The pilot program will run through the end of the year, and I'll talk about next steps at the end. So I think I have one more slide, maybe, Thomas. Community outreach, so just so everyone's aware, we do have a page that's dedicated to public art and expression, where we post regular updates. And then the next slide, we've held a series of community meetings. We've been in touch with the Terre Linda Homeowners Association, have posted on all this good stuff on social media. And you'll see in your staff report that we've had reports to the council and and a recent community meeting last week, which was well-attended, and we received some great feedback from community members and input. So I think at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Damian to talk a little bit more about the group and what it's been up to this last year and a half. So take it, take it away, Damian.
Good evening, Mayor Kate and fellow council members. My name is Damian Ayobio, and I've been a part of the Social Justice group together for the last about eight months. So next slide. So I want to give you a little bit of context of how this group came about. So inside of Terre Linda, there was the, there was a Breonna Taylor chalk mural that was developed by a local resident artist that was inside of Terre Linda. Over the last, you know, few weeks, that that chalk mural was, had different kinds of, you know, iterations of art pieces that would go up. Some of them were saying, you know, like, you know, say their names or just saying her, like, you know, writing her name down or talking about how long that the, the trial that's been going on where there was no one that brought, brought the justice. Out of that, there were some incidents that happened that had the awareness of some improper people that wanted to make their voices heard by destroying the mural. So in response to that, the community got together and partnership with San Rafael created a community group to bring in residents of San Rafael or local stakeholders that have ties in San Rafael to create something in the area that's nearby to, to make a more of a lasting impression on what the, 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 the spirit of that chalk mural was. So out of that chalk mural, this is where the community group came, came to be. So out of that chalk mural, this is where the community group came, came to be. In fall of 2020, there were about, you know, as you can see here, five Terre Linda residents, three members of the, of the Youth and Arts, nonprofit that got together as well, three residents with ties in Seminole, one Cultural Arts Commissioner. And it was also facilitated by Seminole with Lorenzo Jones being the facilitator for our group. He was a part of the Eight Can't Wait Police Reform that was happening in Seminole about the use of force tactics. So it kind of made sense for him to be also involved in this as well, because it ties directly to not only systemic racism that hap, that is plaguing the United States as a country as a whole, but also bringing it home to bring people whose voices that are very spirited about this particular topic together to create something from the mind to actual, you know, something tangible that people can see. Next slide, please. So the, the purpose of this group had three main goals. It was to create an art installation that celebrates equity, diversity, and inclusion, to bring in the voices that were around in the community, to bring in ideas that were around in the community, and to create something with the assistance of City of Seminole to be something that's long-lasting as a, as a monument to what the, the spirit was for that chalk mural. Because, you know, over time, chalk kind of, you know, it, it goes away when, when it starts to rain. Let's pray for that, right? So it goes away and rains. So this will be something that will be more long-lasting, that can last for, you know, generations to come. And it can also potentially be switched out with other art over time, if something else were to come up about. The, the second goal of this committee was to provide healing and hope and unity to the community. And what that basically means is that, you know, these conversations that we have surrounding this large topic is very, very tough, is almost taboo at times. And, and this particular, you know, art would be able to not only bring in people to have these conversations about, hey, let's talk about something cool, but bring in art as well. Because art is a way of, almost like gelling together different voices and different feelings about specific topics. The third major purpose of this was to ensure the process of creating art itself as an education and awareness-building experience for the community. So it wasn't just putting something up, saying, hey, we've done our job here, everybody. It was more, more in the lines of, let's create and continue these conversations about something that is not, that, that is plaguing the community, but also something that needs to be addressed. It's been swept under the rugs too many times for too long. And this is something to kind of bring out the ability to have these conversations, not just, not only about, you know, police brutality and police killings over, you know, black and brown folks over the many years, but also bring the conversation about, of, you know, racist and misogynistic views that people may have to bring it up to the surface, to say, hey, you know what, we're not aligned with that. Let's have these conversations so we can move forward and find out ways of, of creating, you know, like a spirit of togetherness. So our group is met in a collaborative fashion on a frequent basis over regular periods of time. So typically every two weeks or every month that we would meet together and, and have these conversations about these vast ideas about what we wanted to, to look like, right? We wanted to, to say that, hey, you know what, what do we want to do? Do we want to have something that was a mural? Do we want to create a sculpture? All these different ideas. Do we just want to just redo the park? Do we even want to continue with the chalk mural? So these conversations were hashed out, and with everybody having their different views and opinions, we've came up with a one consensus for us to be able to have something tangible that the city can see and that the community can experience and share and rejoice with. Next slide. Therefore, we've created a, a call for artists. Now, myself particularly, I am not an artist. Now, I can draw, you know, stick figures. Want to play hangman? We can do that, of course. But I am not specifically an artist. So there were folks that were, that were very passionate about this conversation and that may not have the ability to create what we all wanted to look for. So we developed some guidelines around trying to figure out what the best artist or the best proposal for artists that we can receive from the community as a whole. It wasn't just coming from us. We wanted to get everybody's input. So we, we solicited proposals for different kinds of art, sculpture art, mural art. We also solicited for the chalk artists as well. So out of all of these things, we, we received a few proposals, and we went with Orin Carpenter, who is on the call right now. He's a local artist and a teacher who was selected to be the lead artist. And not only he was selected to be the lead artist, he had a great idea as well, because we wanted to include the aspect of youth voice in it as well. So because of that, he had a great idea to incorporate his idea of creating this art and bringing the youth voices involved as well, which we thought was a fantastic marrying of exactly what we, what we wanted to, to, to be. It wasn't just our voices, adults and, and stakeholders in the community. We have youth that's also stakeholders. We need to bring them in the conversation as well. Next slide, please. So out of this, you know, idea, like I said, ideas don't matter unless you put them down on paper. And then after you put them down on paper, you can share with others. So because his idea was share with others, we were able to receive $10,000 from the County of Marin and for community service programs that they have. They gave us a $10,000 grant. In addition to the City of Seminole also gave us a $10,000 grant for this pilot project that we have for this art project. And in addition to that, we've also raised, you know, through, you know, various means of like GoFundMe or even asking my mom and things like that, you know, grassroots. We've raised $1,100 through private donations as well. And we're also continuing to try to raise more money, because the art piece is something that we're going to present tonight, that we want you all to, to take in, take in and to review and to get a feeling for it. And then from that, it's also creating the infrastructure of what we want the, the landscape to be as far as what the, the actual canvas of where we're going to put it into. So we're going to talk about that in the next slide. And I want to introduce you to Kristen, who is the Executive Director for Youth and Arts, and she's going to give you a presentation about the art process.
Thanks, Damian. Hi, everybody. Hi, Mayor Kate and councilmembers. Excited to be in front of you again, virtually. Just quickly, I won't take too much of your time, but Youth and Arts was invited to be part of this fantastic community group back in October. And we knew at that time that, what, we didn't know where it was going, for sure, but we knew at that time that we, we wanted to continue to reiterate that youth should be part of the process. And the group has been so collaborative and welcoming, as Damian described, that, that idea was welcomed. And so as, as we did the call for artists and the conversation continued about what this may actually manifest into, that marriage, as Damian mentioned, really came together about the idea of having the lead artist really mentor youth. And so Youth and Arts has stepped in to have a larger role, both as a conduit for fundraising. For instance, we, we were the ones that wrote the proposals for, to the County of Marin, and we're continuing to raise money in that way, because we're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. But also our ability to recruit and bring together youth and, and have a mentor artist in our space. And so that's really, that's what I'm really going to tee up for you tonight, is that in the last few months, our role has, has grown in a way to be this container or this facilitator for youth and for Orin to come together and collaborate and make this really amazing piece. At the very tail end of the school year, we, once we were, once we knew we had some funding coming in, we were able to get an additional call for artists, if you will, call for youth emerging artists out through our networks and our fantastic educators that we know throughout Marin County and beyond. And we received, in actually only two weeks' time, we received a good number of applications from across Marin, Seminole, of course, and Terre Linda, but also beyond our borders of Marin a bit. From those, we selected 10 students to participate. And what we were excited about doing, oh, thank you for that, Thomas. And what we were excited about doing was actually being able to compensate youth. So this model of mentor artists working diligently and intensely with youth in an arts discipline is not new to, of course, art education and certainly not to youth and arts. But in, in this way, we were able to think about actually compensating and, and doing some job skills training with youth and mentoring in that way, as well as creating a space, a safe space that youth could talk about these really heavy and important issues that are facing, facing us locally, facing their lives, and of course, facing our nation. So that's exactly what we did. We selected 10 youth. We brought them in. They met for about five weeks with Orin Carpenter, and we've been able to actually hand them paychecks, which has felt really, really great. So we're really excited about that. And we don't take that lightly. It's something that we're hoping will continue and be replicated as a model for youth and arts going forward in that way. So it's, this process, I bring that up to say that this process of collaboration and this community-based process is also changing an organization that has been part of the fabric of Marin County and Seminole for 50 years, which is really, really exciting to see. So just that beautiful change continues. You'll see on, on the screen in front of you, we actually have 10 youth that participated. You can see where they are attending high school. We have one that's not listed there that's chosen to be anonymous, but we're so thankful for their contribution as well. And before I kick it off, I also want to just note that we had a senior emerging artist, we called him, who is on the call with us tonight, Owen Martinez Alejandra, who will also share with you about his work and his leadership in that way. So I'm going to stop talking. I'm going to hand it off to the amazing Orin Carpenter, who has been working with this fantastic group, and he's going to share with you actually about the art, I'm sorry, the, the piece that we're talking about tonight. So Orin, go ahead and take it away. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kristen. Hello, everyone. Can you hear me okay? All right. So first, as I, I begin to talk about this, Mayor Kate and city council members and even the community that's, that's on tonight, just thank you so much for allowing us to be here tonight and definitely to speak on this, this most important situation and not only important project, but also an important tenet as we try to move forward in finding ways to have discussion about difficult topics and uncomfortable conversations, as you would. And so if we can actually go to the next slide, Thomas, it'd be great. Thank you. So teaming up with Youth and Arts, I definitely, as I told Kristen, for me, definitely being a teacher, I always think about, when we have these difficult topics to talk about, I always think about growing up as a kid, where as a kid, you're always pushed out of the room to have those adult conversations. And seeing how today's world is, our students are having more adult conversations without adults in the room, per se, via social media. And this was just a wonderful way, as an art teacher, how I helped students figure out ways to communicate, visually communicate and figure out that there are always different avenues to do so. And so when asked to be a part of this project, I wanted to think about, how can I get these students, as Kristen shared, that we had students from different areas, different schools, different walks of life, coming to a room, a think tank, as you will, to come up with a topic, one idea, for us to express to a whole community? That in itself is a challenge for an adult. So imagine teenagers from ages 14 to 18 were asking them to do this. Without any pause, these students were hungry, desirable, and ready to dive in. And so how I got them into transition, I told them to kind of think about what our project is. They knew coming in, we gave them some backstory on the project, what had transpired, and where we wanted to go from there. And I gave them three words, liberty, justice, and freedom. And I told them, I wanted them to think about those words and create their own piece using those three words, so we can find some commonality across the diverse board that we had with the students and their ideas. Once they all kind of created their own piece using those words, then we critiqued and talked about it, talked about some of those things that were common, some of those things that they felt were very strong elements. And then we then grouped them together, and as they grouped together, continued conversation, we then told them as a group to come up with a piece. So I wanted to continue this transition of not only having their own voice and realizing the value and worth of their own voice, but also seeing how the value and worth of their voice can also come together and collaborate with other voices. Not demeaning or minimizing anyone else's value or voice, but showing how across the board that we all can have something to say. Once they did that, we then came back to the drawing table, and then we decided on, for their group piece, to look at their pieces and decide which piece that they felt would be the strong piece to present as our idea for the fire mural. Now, in that concept, they went back, they kind of took some things, tweaked, created another individual piece as they brought it back. Once we then kind of discussed and voted on the piece, Owen, who will actually talk about his piece in just a minute, his piece was voted on as the best foundation for us to grow from, and then find ways to actually incorporate some of their strong elements into this one piece. And so before I turn it over to Owen, I just want to say, I am, as a teacher, even though every year as a teacher, you, you see how your students can constantly amaze you, and I'm pretty sure there's some teachers here listening now. But for me, to see these students in such a short time deal with a topic that we already know is such a huge problem in our society today, as I hear that it's one of those constant wounds that have never healed, and to ask students to actually come up with an idea that would help create conversation with this piece, and for them to come forth, not only set aside their own ideas, not only set aside and say, well, you know what, my piece might not be the strongest piece. I was amazed, I was humbled, and I was very proud. One last thing before I send it to Owen. The challenge that I also gave them with this piece, when we think of social justice pieces and we think of murals, we usually have one concept. And the one challenge that I had for them was to come up with an idea that will not compromise their integrity, not compromise their voice, not compromise what they want to say. However, create a piece to where it will be welcoming for people who see it to want to actually come in and have conversation. Because as we know, when we deal with these kind of conversations, this is a conversation that's been going on for centuries. It's hard for us to sit at a table, especially when we're different, and to allow ourselves to be open and vulnerable and transparent in this conversation. So to ask, again, teenagers to come up with an idea to where we can kind of set the stage for that, as you will see in this piece, I just found that it was amazing for them to actually come up with a final piece. And so with that said, I'm going to actually pass it over to Owen, just to have him kind of talk about some of the key elements of the piece to present to you now. Okay, Owen, take it away.
Thank you so much, Orin. Thank you so much again for having me. So this is my, this is the design that I ended up finalizing. As you can see, it has a lot of flowers, and the flowers, to me, really represents perseverance. Let's see, perseverance. Because I wanted to add something symbolic and pure. And so flowers really was something that really stood out to me as to being something fragile and, but it's still persistence to bloom and, and outshine. And these enchanting colors. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. I'm not used to this.
You're doing great. You're doing great. Don't worry. You're doing great.
Okay, so my idea for, for this mural was to capture an envision of the future, of casual tranquility, where the only possible mark of temper lies within one's actions and not their figure. And so, I mean, you can't really see it here, but the, there's little tiny people. And in the shade, you can kind of see their skeletons. And so the shade kind of acts as a natural filter for the sun, a visionary element that we need to help us see and understand the world around us. But not everything stands as it is truly, and the first impressions are always just introductions. The skeleton figures are just really reminders that we are all truly the same inside and that we are living, that we should strive to live harmoniously with nature and not to strive against this, not to strive against deliberate, deliberate chaos. But my initial challenge for this mural was just relating it to social justice, not exactly in the execution, but rather in the amount of ideas I had to scratch for the lack of space. There were just, as this idea of this single envisionment I had in mind, as I kept evolving and adding more things, it just kept getting bigger and bigger, to the point where it almost felt overwhelming. And so I kind of had to tone it down a bit, and I did. And with the feedback of my, of my group, once I, once I learned that my piece was finalized to be the, the one to be used for the mural, they kind of helped me guide this piece forward into creating something more, something more, I wouldn't, let's see, something more like in a community, connectiveness with nature. Nature is something that I've really aspired to have a strong image in. So that's what the, that's what the flowers truly represents. And there were just some elements that I just couldn't include without compromising the original image I settled for. With the original elements of liberty, freedom, and justice, I rebranded them into fluorescents, regrowth, and rejuvenation, which really just is just to strive and to have strength and to have perseverance in the unknown. And in the, in the, in the left side, you could see a tree, a tree blossom, and in there it has three distinct names, Ahmad Arbery, Breonna Taylor, and George Floyd. They're just some of the shining staples that trajectory, projected the social movement, social justice movements to address the social issues. social justice movements to address the social issues of racial injustice and to have progress in developing solutions. But these unfortunate tragedies have paved hope and reinforced security to an ever-aware community to better their actions and beliefs and to reduce the harm taught by the misguided generations. Thank you.
Thank you, Owen. I think Mr. Carpenter might have a few words to add as well. And I want to capture everything you were saying, by the way, because I just keep envisioning, and I think you're going to talk about this later, having a plaque next to the art piece. Because I'm kind of in the stick figure realm along with Damian, so having someone walk me through the art is so incredible and so helpful. So thank you, Owen. Mr. Carpenter.
Yes, thank you again, Mayor Kate. I just wanted to add a few more points. Thank you, Owen. Did a wonderful job. And as Mayor Kate, as you said, we will definitely have a placard with the mural to kind of talk everyone through the transition of the piece. Because as Owen said, it was so many different elements. And I think that's the beautiful part about it, is it will create more conversation. But I just wanted to kind of, a few more points I wanted to bring out just to kind of show the aspect of what students actually thought about when we thought about social justice. It wasn't just based on, you know, racial discrimination, but it was just all aspects of it. With a lot of the pieces, and I know Owen touched on the skeleton pieces for a little bit, but I also want to talk about some of the other pieces that you see. You see a lot of interaction going on with pieces. A few of the students talked about generational aspects, where there's a huge divide to where they wanted, even in passing down the hope that we have for a better world, how the older generation passes things down to the younger generation. And so you will see those interactions in different ways throughout this piece. If you look at the giant yellow round flower there, you see a younger person or the older person's shadow as they're reaching up for the flowers. Again, a lot of reaching up for hope, I know that Owen talked about as we discussed this. Also, you actually see over to the far left, and I'm sorry I'm jumping around, but there's actually a totem there. And the totem actually is to symbolize and pay honor and tribute to the Mewoc tribe. Because we know, of course, of their land being this land that we're now on here. And then another aspect that I wanted to point out real quick is I know we also wanted three other words that's not on here, but we actually want to put on the panel. And the words are going to be liberty, justice and equality that we're going to have on the panels of this piece, which will be a triptych as well. So those pieces will be there too, to kind of help with that connection with the social justice. So I just wanted to point those other elements out as well. So again, thank you, Mayor Kate, for giving me that extra time. Thank you.
Absolutely. I think we're all totally engrossed. And my, the only thing I'm just pointing at is I can't see it bigger. I keep trying to zoom in, but of course you can't zoom in on zoom on other images. So I think we will, when it's finalized, have it on both the city website so people can make it larger. So Assistant City Manager Lilovich, did you have anything else or?
Yeah, just one more quick slide. I just wanted to talk about next steps. And then maybe, Thomas, you could put it back on the image for discussion because it is really beautiful to look at. So if the council approves the design concept, which is what the staff recommendation is tonight, we will work together to install the project this fall. We're looking at other park improvements and the group has put together some concepts around site design. As Orin just mentioned, the concept is for this to be an triptych. And there's a couple of different reasons for that. So that would be three panels each. And there's some safety reasons, line of sight and also for ADA access. So we're looking at a park bench and maybe some new landscaping materials to make it a really conducive gathering place for the community to come together and view the art, but engage around the art and hopefully bring some neighbors together to engage in these crucial conversations. And then I mentioned earlier that will, as it relates to the Pilot Public Art Program, this fall, we'll be doing some community engagement workshops around getting input from all those that have been involved in both of the Canal Arts Initiative Project and this project to get their feedback about what worked about, how we did this process, what could we do better, what do we want to formalize moving forward. And then staff would come in early 2022 with a recommendation for a formalized, ongoing public art program for San Rafael, which we're really excited about. And also really appreciate both of these community groups for helping us learn and grow this program over the last year. It's pretty miraculous to see the fruition of all this effort come together tonight. And so that was all I had for closing comments. But yeah, thank you, Thomas, for bringing us back to the image. And thank you, Orin and Owen, for a really wonderful presentation of your design and your art process.
Wonderful. And before I, I'll just call on the council individually because it's hard to see both images. But I agree, I want to keep the images up there as we're talking about it. And I reiterate the thanks to Damian and the entire group that did meet over eight months consistently to have those tough conversations. Kristin for bringing Youth and Arts and their incredible voices. And Mr. Carpenter, we all know, it wouldn't have happened if it hadn't been for your leadership and your vision to lift up the youth voices. And artist Owen, I mean, this is incredible. Like I wanted a T-shirt. Maybe I shouldn't say that. But that's how kind of I feel. It is so incredible looking. So with that, I will just call on my council members. I'll start with Councilmember Rachel Kurtz, as this installment would be in District Four. So Councilmember Kurtz.
Thank you. And I already beat you to it. I was already asking Youth and Arts if they would do a shopping bag. So, and Kristin said, yes, they're working on it. So, you know, obviously, for me, it was not only this end piece, as we've talked about, but it is the process. And I was wondering, you know, I know we're going to go back and do lessons learned around the process. Is there one thing at this point, and I don't know whether it's Kristin or Orin, that you could just give us sort of an insight? Like what would you, if we could do it again? Is there, is it more, you know, having more time? Or, you know, what, if there's a thing, you know, is there something that we need to take away right off the top to say with a pilot, you know, this is a pilot. So we should be expecting that there'll be some changes. And then I do have some comments as far as the piece goes, but that'll be later.
Correct. Yeah, let's start with the question. So Orin or Kristin, did you want to? And again, we will do a full debrief, but if there's something that comes to mind, you know, the question has been asked.
Sure, sure. I'll just say real quick, you know, we really pushed hard with the youth recruitment at the very tail end of the school year. And had we had, I mean, funding takes a while and this has been iterative over months and months. And I would have loved to get that call out sooner to youth and had more youth participate or a longer time for them to participate. Orin is a school teacher, so we had, you know, this summertime window to get him in the door. Yeah, so that's what I would do differently. But, you know, at the same time, we ended up with a really lovely intimate group and it was just great. It was like we were pinching ourselves having actual people in our space doing art, which was lovely. So Orin, how about you?
You know, for me, as always, I look at things how they, you know, how it ends up and how it works out is how it should have been. Same things that Kristin said, you know, especially the school year, my concern was the students being mentally fatigued, a long year. But the energy that these students brought, again, it just, it kind of, you know, well, it just, yeah, it surprised me. I'll just say that, a loss for words. But I know one thing, and it's probably more on my end, that the students, and this being a pilot project, I think the end result actually is going to be better than what we anticipated. But I know for the students, they were really wanting that experience to share painting an actual mural. Because again, when we think of murals, we think of the actual process of painting on either a wall or some type of material. And I explained to them the importance of what this project is, that it is a pilot. And so they understand. And that's one thing they said, that if we can, if this is something that we continue to do, at least have one of those projects to where that interaction happens. Because the student said that that process is just as important to where they're all painting on something and seeing it come to life instead of just on paper, but a different medium. So that's the only, only thing I would say. And I know that's something as we move forward, something that we'll definitely figure out.
No, that's good. Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you. So right now, we're just asking questions. So I will come back to you, Councilmember Kurtz, after we have the public comments. So Councilmember Micah, do you have any questions?
I do not have any questions. I will have some comments at the end. I just want to tell you how happy this makes me. It is unbelievable. So amazing. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill, do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Kate. I will have comments as well towards the end. I do have one question. I did notice in staff report, it talks about order of magnitude years. And I wanted to just maybe understand some of the factors of what could make it, you know, that the years go longer. I know we're in a pilot, so obviously it's under assessment. But what would be some of the factors that could, say, prolong this piece from staying longer?
I'm happy to respond to that question. So I think that it's a great question. We've talked about this a little bit. And I think I'm not, I'm also the stick figure drawer. But when we're talking about public art and this being in a public space, I think what we've talked about with the group is that we really wanted a sense of permanency, but also that this isn't a static conversation and that anything in a public space really needs, you know, some sort of consideration of its presence in space and time, right? So we're in a place of, you know, presenting this as a concept that would be a multi-year placement, but also recognizing that as the community and the issues evolve, we're going to want to continue to be engaged in the community about it. And it's like, the answer to the question is it's, this is where we are now. We don't know exactly where we're going to be three, five, seven years from now. And there might be a new concept. And one of the things we've talked about is, you know, there could be some rotation. But that's kind of for future conversation. We're just really thrilled to be able to bring this project forward today for consideration and to actually make this manifest in that park is a really exciting opportunity. The other thing that occurred to me I should have mentioned, and Orin mentioned, the medium. As far as like sustainability of the piece, the vision is for this piece to be, and Kristin, you might have to help me if there are more technical questions, but for it to actually be printed on some sort of vinyl material. And then these are the things that we've got to kind of figure out as it relates to getting it installed. If the council approves, the design element is what type of material would the vinyl be? You know, it'd be like a wrap and then there can be protective coating over that. It can also then be replaced if there's any sort of marking or fading of sun or whatever, anything like that. So there's some real advantages to having that, but it could also then be replicated through other, into other bags, T-shirts, fundraising, things that Kristin might want to work on with the group. So I hope that answers your question for now, Councilmember Hill.
It did. In fact, you went into my next question, so that's great. I'll reserve comments for later. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just have one question. It came from, we had the advantage of having a presentation last week on this piece. So I've seen it and I'd heard additional presentations at that point. If you could speak to, we talked about the plaque already, Orin mentioned that. Because I think when people interact with art, it's both, it's starting the conversation and drawing people in. So could you speak to the plaque? And I think you'd also possibly talk about a bench or how can people experience it? Because one thing I was really impressed upon was the group actually talked about the experience that people have when they walk by. So could, I'm not sure who can speak to that, but that was very thoughtful as well.
Kristin, do you mind taking a first stab at that and maybe throwing some comments on the QR code concept?
Yes, yes, absolutely. So the actual, I'll start with talking about the infrastructure piece is really in that iterative loop that the design process was in too. So we're presenting the concept of the art to you tonight, but the next steps that Christine mentioned are really thinking about and fundraising for what this goes on, what material we use, what upgrades we can make to the park to keep everyone safe. And yes, we're, the intention is to have at least one bench in front of this triptych that families can safely come and individuals can accessibly reach and sit and be safe in the park and take this in. In addition to that, the other benefit of having an organization like Youth and Arts as part of this is that we can facilitate some community engagement on the other side of this, if you will. So we're hoping to actually put a QR code on, somewhere on the word, maybe on the back. The names will actually likely be listed, the names of the participants and the artists that participated, Owen and Orin, and then of course, the entire ensemble. But the QR code could link to the city's website, Youth and Arts website, and additional websites. It can actually be digital and take people away from where they're standing at the moment to actually read more about the symbols, the theme, the motif, all, everything that we just talked about. In addition, Youth and Arts, like so many organizations and like all of our educators, had to employ a lot of digital and virtual solutions this last year. So we have an entire digital platform that we could actually put some activities, family, family activities, a study guide, if you will, for schools and teachers. We could actually link to a lot of free material. So that's all in the thought process right now, clearly not created yet, but something we're thinking about. And then finally, we're hoping to actually do in-person family workshops where families, and COVID-dependent, of course, but where families could actually participate and learn about this and engage in conversation. The community members can actually create. We always want to center the creative process because although you're all talking about only being able to make six years, we believe that everyone is an artist and can participate in the artistic process. So we want you to come and do that as well. So with the, you know, how high is up? We can go, we can really take this a long way, right? And really engage the community in what we're talking about, conversation, collaboration and creativity together.
Thank you. Well, I think it is exciting to imagine it installed, having people sitting there, chatting, meeting their neighbors, having a conversation, placard or QR code to get additional information. I think that is just, it's kind of like this 3D interactive experience. I'm just so excited about that. But let's hear, and let's hear what the public has in terms of input on this item. So I see Madam City Clerk, if you could open the public comment.
Yes, thank you. To comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. And if you're calling in by phone, please press star nine. And once you've heard the notification that the host is inviting you to speak, you'll need to press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker will have two minutes to provide public comments. And then they will be muted once time has elapsed. And if you're experiencing any technical difficulties, please email me at city.clerk@cityofsanrefeld.org. I do see two hands raised. Go ahead.
Lindsay, is this, are you talking to me?
Yes.
Hi, Pam. Go ahead. Well, thank you very much for letting me comment. I have several layers of gratitude. And that starts off with the gratitude I have for the chalk artists in the first place that brought all of this discussion going. And it was just so moving and meaningful. And then I have gratitude for the committee that worked so hard on this and the artists and including Mr. Carpenter. And then I have a lot of gratitude for the public process and how incredible the mayor and Rachel Kurtz, who's my city council member for my district, and Christina Lilovich did with Thomas Wong of bringing us together to discuss this. It was so incredibly important and I want to thank you for that. And the art is wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
Yeah, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Oh, outstanding. How's everybody doing? My comments come in several parts. I strongly believe that we should eliminate mandates for minimum lot sizes, minimum lot widths and minimum building sizes for all real estate product types. If you own a parcel of land, you should be able to build the structure that you want on it. We should also eliminate minimum parking requirements for the same reason. Developers know what the market demands and if they're wrong, that's their problem.
Sorry, Reese, I'm going to interrupt and you can keep going. So we are taking public comment on this art piece. And we do have a housing element later on in the agenda. I'm thinking that might be where you want to give comment.
Yeah, you're 100% right. I will, as you can cut my mic here. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
I see no other hands raised, so I'm just going to give another reminder. If you can use, if you'd like to provide public comment, please use the raise hand feature through Zoom. Or if you're calling in, please press star nine. Now I'll give everyone a few seconds. I see no additional public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment and bring it back to the council. And I'm just forecasting, I think we're all going to figure out different ways to say the word wonderful and amazing in our comments, but let's see how that ends up. So I will start with Councilmember Kurtz. I would love your comments.
Yeah, wonderful. The one thing that was introduced tonight, and I love it, but I didn't hear anyone speak to it, was the title, regeneration. And I love the title. And it was something that, I mean, we saw, this has happened so fast. I mean, it was like from February, I think, when we first started with this whole idea of a pilot. And it was so hard for me to start learning about the fact that art was being treated the same as any other planning project before this. And it was so hard for me to start learning about the fact that art was being treated the same as any other planning project before this. And this just gives me chills in terms of what has been produced in terms of of art project. But the fact that just looking at the tenants of what they really instilled about the way the process now is going to be different for future projects around open communication, having those hard conversations, developing the community partnerships, as Pam Reeve said, really establishing that process with the community to have feedback. And and this process was iterative. And a lot of art projects are not that way. You're presented with a piece of art and you like it or you don't like it. And this was something that was iterative, not only very receptive to taking community feedback, but I love the fact that it had the student voices in there, and it was iterative to the student voices. So I just think that the work here is very exciting. I'm thrilled that it's going to be at Arbor Park. I'm looking forward to it. I'd love to know a little bit more about regeneration, or you can put that on the plaque as it comes forward. But I think, you know, we broke new ground and this process, so thank you for everyone who worked on it and for the work for the Canal Alliance project as well. We broke new ground of having, how do we go from not having an art piece to having an art piece in a very, very fast, timely, you know, fast process that has great community support and involvement? So thank you. And thank you to all those for the financial support as well. That definitely helped, and I think it was very meaningful for the students to be able to be paid for this type of work. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtz. Mr. Carpenter, can I put you on the spot? Because I do think that we'd love to hear about regeneration, because that's a great, I think we all read it, but, you know, enlighten us a little more.
Well, actually, I'm going to turn it over to Owen, because he actually came up, that's his title. He actually came up for the piece. So Owen, take it over.
Wait, Owen, you're on mute. Try one more time. Yep, go ahead. There you go.
Regeneration, basically, like, one of the major themes was regrowth and fluorescents and rejuvenation. And I feel like all of those things embodied kind of entitles regeneration and how we, through through growth and through strength, we we move forward. And that's kind of what I wanted to envision with this mural, and that's kind of where the title came in, came in place. So.
Beautiful. It's wonderful.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Councilmember Micah.
Yeah, thank you. This is such a beautiful piece. It really makes me smile. I love the regeneration. I love the fact that it's connected to, you know, this important topic is connected to nature because I think it's so basic. And I really, really appreciate not just the art that is beautiful, but all the details that you went into. So Owen, you did an amazing job presenting as well, and really appreciate you and all the students who have worked with you. They, you know, Mr. Carpenter and Mr. Oyovio. Kristin, I think this is an amazing, where we are so lucky to have you in our community, bringing art. I'm very proud of the one in the canal as well. And yeah, I think it's amazing, and I'm excited with the canal, now with this one, what is the the next ones that they are coming? Because I think art really has the power to transform a community. So I'm really excited for that. My two comments is, the first one is that I would love to see this in a mural that is not a vinyl because we are talking about nature and maybe sustainability, but I do understand the challenges as well of making it like a public art that, you know, is is going to be preserved. So that's just like a food for thought. The second one, I hear that it was very challenging to recruit the students, and it's always challenging, especially at the end of the school year. In the future, I would really love to see more students from San Rafael, just because, you know, my little, my little thing in there, like pointing out, we have like great artists as well here. And I know we had some students, but like I would love to see all the students from San Rafael. So those are my two comments. Congratulations. I cannot wait to see it. And yeah, I would love to have my little bag or T-shirt or whatever it is. It is a beautiful piece of art. So I really, really love it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. And thank you, everyone, for walking us through this this evening. When I had read through the staff report and took in the visual, I have to say that hearing the the voiceover from the word spoken tonight moved and inspired me. I have to say that even the context of what you spoke about, Orin, about talking about making sure that we're being inclusive of our our past. I, when I look at this, this art, it does prompt for me the questions that I think we want to be asking ourselves and that the community can be talking about as we, as people look at this and understand not just what's on, not just what's in front of us, but also the process itself, I was inspired to hear about as well. How how you described it and and put this together. I I think it's it's a, my sense is that it's a microcosm of what we hope is the process going forward. So I appreciated your words about the challenging conversations. I think that this is something that this community will benefit from, and I I'm I'm moved. So thank you so much for for bringing this to us tonight, and I'm looking forward to seeing it in the community.
Thank you, Councilmember Hill. I reiterate, underscore whatever everyone else has already said, and really reflecting on what is art? What is art in the public space, right? And how can we lift that up? And really based on all the the tough year last year, and it seemed that art was what we turned to when we didn't have the words to connect. And yes, and we can connect, and I know David and I were making fun of ourselves at our stick figures, but yeah, even stick figures can connect. And so I think we really understand that. And I'm just, this entire process, both the one in the canal and this one, this is the type of tool that I want our community to have, to build those connections and to have those conversations. I mean, this is, kept thinking like this is a doorway for those conversations to be had. And the fact that you would fold it in, the youth voices and all the part, and Owen, you did an incredible job presenting. And and both the words you said, but but we could feel you, Owen, we could feel your heart by looking at the what you what you created and then the input you got from your team. And I just couldn't be more proud that this is in San Rafael. And like my colleagues, I'm thinking, okay, where else can we, where else can we do this? And have QR codes and really start to have those tough conversations. That's the kind of community we want to be. We want to have those hard conversations, and we want to have a way to enter into them. And and this is, to me, is what this piece does. And I just, I couldn't be happier and more proud of all the work that went into it, all the people on the screen and all the people behind the scenes, and you know who you are. So so thank you. Just, I can't wait for this ribbon cutting. You're going to have everybody there. We're going to, even if we're six foot distance and double masked, we are going to be there. We are not going to miss out on this event. So but I don't want to get ahead of myself because I would need to have a motion on this item. And whoever makes a motion, maybe Councilmember Kurtz, if you could read it in, please.
Oh, I do not have the text. That was the one thing I'm I'm lacking the text.
Well, would you like to have a doctor resolution approving the design and installation of a public art mural at Arbor Park? Is that what your motion is?
Yes, that would be lovely. Absolutely. That would be my motion. Thank you.
And moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yaren Scalotti.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
I that motion carries four zero. Thank you all. So grateful.
Thank you. And council and staff and everyone, I'm going to sign off now. Really appreciate it, and I will be in touch soon and have a good rest and meeting.
Good luck moving your son into college.
Thank you. Bye.
Okay, really switching gears from art. Okay, Director Garen, I'm sure you're you're ready to meet that bar.
We're going to top that, top that topic.
So let me just introduce it first. So our first, we have two special presentations. The first one is presentation by PG&E on wildfire planning. So with that, I will turn it to Director Garen.
Well, you just did what my job was tonight, Mayor. I was going to introduce Mark Van Gorder with PG&E. He's been with PG&E as a public relations and government relations manager for for quite a long time. I've worked with him all the time. I've been in San Rafael. And he's here tonight to to update us on PG&E's wildfire response preparations and PSPS event preparations that might come to San Rafael this fall. So I'll leave it to Mark to make his presentation.
Thank you so much. Welcome, Mr. Van Gorder.
Thank you very much, Mayor and council members and Director Garen. Also with me, at least I think he's with me, I keep seeing him sort of pop in and out on the video, is our division leader, Austin Sharp. So if you have audio, Austin, maybe you could just introduce yourself before we go into the presentation.
I do. Good evening, everyone. As Mark said, I'm Austin Sharp. I am the senior manager for the North Bay Division here at PG&E.
Welcome.
Thank you.
And I, I probably, I just can't start without at least commenting that I really enjoyed the art presentation.
Totally appropriate. Yep, we feel, yeah, totally appropriate. Yep.
So so our presentation will be not nearly as exciting, though critically important to your your residents and business owners and constituents. So without further ado, I'm going to try and make this fairly quick. Some of this, many of you have seen, some of the council members may not have seen it. But again, the intention here for all is not to be so fast to, you know, to to be evasive, for lack of a better word that's coming to my mind, but but to go through it fairly quickly, knowing that typically the question and answer period is where we really want to get to. So feel free to stop me at any point, and then, of course, question and answers, we can come right back. So I'm going to start sharing my screen. Again, my intention is to spend three or four minutes here on what I hope you see as sort of a Google Earth map to talk really quickly about how does electricity get to your homes and businesses in San Rafael? What are some of the challenges that we face with historic drought, dead dying and diseased trees, very high fire threat areas, and getting electricity through those electric wires safely to homes and businesses? So we talk about safe, reliable, and affordable electricity. So without getting into the details, it'll take too long. Happy to come back with Q and A. You know, here's the county of Marin generally. These blue lines carry 230,000 volts of electricity. And, you know, without without spending too much time, these triangles are substations. I'll get to the substations in a little bit. But, you know, we have substations that then sort of step down that electricity. Primary substation, which many of you are familiar with and have passed by, around Highway 101 and 37 interchange on the eastern side is this large electric substation. And then that feeds from there all of the county of Marin. But backing out, it then steps down to these lines that both run sort of north to south, mostly along 101. But we also have lines that go out through these high fire threat areas. This line in particular is a 60,000 volt conductor. And you can see some of the challenges in the county is that these lines run through the red, which is a very high fire threat area, and the yellow, which is less high fire threat. We call it red, or the CPUC calls the red tier three, then the gold tier two. They're both places we would like to avoid having any kind of ignition. So I just want to mention that, that there are parts of the county of Marin where we have these concerns. Thankfully, the service that goes to San Rafael, and I've got this pulled out a little bit so we can just see, really mirrors the 101 corridor, and I'm sure anyone who's sat in traffic for a while and had time to look around has seen the the large poles or or towers on on 101 and 37 that lead and wind down along 101 and come into the city of San Rafael. Really quickly, the substation, again, as I'm sure many people know, is is right downtown nearby Marin. We actually performed a remediation project on this site here for future development not too long ago. So just for orientation, this is, this is the substation where where the power comes into into San Rafael and then goes out through distribution lines. So if I can, I'm just going to turn off the transmission lines here. The green, the green is the underground lines. So just in a second, we're going to get to the point of most concern, which is overhead lines. But there are a number of green lines which indicate where we have lines that are underground. Let me get rid of those. And now let's focus on the concerns that we have for fire season and providing electricity to the community. There are a number of circuits, as you can see and already you know, living in the community, that move both from areas that are relatively safe to be energized in what we call tier one or or an area of little to no concern up into the gold areas of tier two, where there's a lot of vegetation of concern and into areas that are tier three that are that are high concern. Our objective is to energize as much of of the city of San Rafael and all other communities and cities while while turning off the power in in areas, I don't know this for sure, but, you know, it's conceivable that we would have installed or would consider installing in the future something called a sectionalizer that would stop the power in this neighborhood here, allowing power to remain on, you know, for all of these residents before it goes up into the hills, into these areas. And so some some folks would have power turned off. But but the idea is to keep as many people with power on safely. So can you now see the PowerPoint presentation I have up?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. Again, I'm going to move through these slides relatively quickly. It may seem odd. I'm starting off on on slide 11. I'll come back to some of the other pre slides. But for folks who don't know what a public safety power shut off is, it's when we have very low humidity, high, high winds that are in the 20 mile per hour range, or if they're gusting from time to time, 30, 40 miles an hour. Red flag warnings, though red flag warnings aren't required, they're just something we consider. Condition of the material, so fuel moistures. I'm sure you've already heard from your fire chiefs and from the county fire chiefs talking about how critically dry the fuels are this year. They are approximately two months ahead of, ahead of where they would normally be. So in July, I think we were seeing fuel moistures that we normally would expect in September. All of these things combined would lead us to have concerns about a public safety power shut off. And for background, and if you haven't read the news or heard yet, we are preparing for a public safety power shut off today, not in Marin County, thankfully, but in in many other counties. I won't go into the details about that, but I've sent out communications to a lot of folks in Napa County, in particular. Happy to share that information with you, council members, if that's of interest to you offline tomorrow. So when we see those conditions, we're notifying customers one to two days in advance. That's what we've been doing all day today. We prepared for that the day before. So what you don't see here, I think one of these days we should probably include it on the slide. If you slide this line out a little further, one day before we get to the customer notifications, we have our public safety specialists working directly with the county office of emergency services, reaching out to local fire chiefs, other public safety specialists in all the jurisdictions of Marin County, Napa County, counties that are impacted, to start planning, coordinating, organizing, finding out where we're going to put community resource centers. I want to call to your attention this, this, sorry, the website in particular, it's new, and and I find it to be very helpful. In the past, you could look up, you could get information and alerts for your billing address. This allows you to plug in an address and multiple addresses. So if you want to know where your kid's school address is, and if they're going to be part of a power outage, or maybe you have a family member who's in a care facility, and you want to know about a power outage there. You may have somebody that lives in a county in the north or the south, and you'd like to know their their wealth. in the north or the south, and you'd like to know their welfare. So it's really handy, it's especially handy for mobile home communities where you may have what's called a single meter. So there's one meter, everyone in the, in the mobile home community or a multi, multi-unit dwelling will have one electric meter. That address, they can plug in here and they will get alerts. Whereas in the past, it would just have gone to the community manager or the apartment manager, multi-unit manager. So that's how we communicate, you know, a couple of days ahead, just before. And then we'll communicate throughout the day as we're patrolling the lines to make sure there was no damage during the windstorms, and then we will restore the power. This, this slide, I'm going to cover this quickly. The slides, you should all have these as part of the presentation, so they should be part of the council packet. I believe, I talked to the city clerk, who said that they would be available publicly. So this entire presentation and these helpful links are all available to the public, either currently or soon will be. So let me go back, let's go back to the beginning. This is a little cutout of the San Rafael city limits. And, and what we are doing, I'm going to skip these slides. This just talks about what we're doing generally around our service territory. This is talking about Marin County generally, where we're, what we've completed in 2020, as far as hardening the system with stronger poles, insulated wire, cutting back vegetation away from the lines to ensure that that doesn't get entangled or fall or, or cause a potential ignition. The sectionalizing devices that are being installed. We've completed 60 and we have several more on the way. That's the device that I mentioned earlier that would shut the power off before it moves up into the high fire threat areas. And then we have a number of community resource centers, and I can show you where those are, as well as weather stations and high-definition cameras. So this is very, a little difficult to see. I apologize for that. Let me see if I can improve the look here a bit. But we have multiple sectionalizing devices that stop the power before it goes into the high fire threat areas and keeps the city power on. So along with that, it's not a lot, but we're doing as much as we can, as quickly as we can in hardening the electric system, especially through those high vegetation areas. We have 28 weather stations. We've installed 12 cameras. If I understood after talking with our public safety specialist, Jim Wickham, I think we actually have three more, and I can get those to you. I don't have them on this map. But we're installing them quickly enough that, that our maps are getting outdated as I'm making the presentations. But there's three additional cameras. Here are the community resource centers. So if there were to be a public safety power shut-off, these locations, we would coordinate with the Office of Emergency Services and with local public safety specialists in your cities, if your city, if your city is going to be impacted. Again, the chances we, I would expect for San Rafael to be impacted by a public safety power shut-off are, are not that high because the transmission lines that serve the substation, that then provides the, the power out to the city residents. I think, you know, it's not in the high fire threat area and likely would not be shut down. So that's a really quick run-through of the slides. Here's some phone numbers and email addresses and, and website for people who are watching, if they want to check in on those. I also told the clerk, I have a number of favorite links, quick, you know, quick links that are helpful to bookmark that I can send, and if it's helpful, it can be posted on the website, city's website newsletter, or sent out as, as part of this package. That's the presentation. I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Mark, and we will confirm with the city clerk, having, having, letting the public have access to it because there is a lot of information on there, and it's one of those things that I think people will want to drill down. We especially appreciate the links and the new signup. I just jotted that down. I don't think pgne.com backslash address alerts. I think that's great. So we will make sure that that is available, easy to find on our website. So I'm sure there'll be some questions from my colleagues. So Councilmember Hill, we'll start with you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Kate. Hello, Mark. Hello, Austin. Thank you for being with us this evening. I had a question about enhanced vegetation management. I, I was trying to work out on the, the miles that I saw for Marin. It didn't seem like it was that long water magnitude. I saw one number that looked like 51. But I know Marin is much bigger than that. I would have expected more. Can you comment a little bit on what PG&E is doing and what their obligations are and standards for vegetation management? I think to myself of, you know, a canopy around both transmission and distribution lines that I think could, you know, pose risk. And I'm just curious, what is the kind of obligation that you hold yourselves to with respect to vegetation management?
Sure. You know, I think Austin and I can probably tag team on this, and he can add on anything that he feels I might have missed. But the, so the enhanced vegetation management, I just want to be clear, is above and beyond our annual inspections. We inspect the lines annually. There's a California Public Utilities Commission requirement that we maintain a distance away from our electric lines. And depending on the type of tree and how fast it grows into those lines, if it's a very slow growing tree, an oak or something of that nature, we may not need to cut the oak tree that far back from the lines. We are constantly trying to balance safety with the appreciation for, for people's trees. We know how important the, the trees are to people. And so it's a balance. But what we have to do is we have to maintain that distance. So if we have a, an elm tree or other fast-growing tree, we may need to cut back six feet or so. It's determined by arborists how far to cut back. There's a prescription that's issued on, on, and then we have the crews come through. And that's an annual inspection. It's an annual trim of the trees to keep them away from the lines. The enhanced vegetation management usually is something we need to work out with the property owners. Property owner might be the city, private property owners. And whatever the case is, we will work with them and, and talk about removing trees in whole or large sections of the trees away from the lines. And that's a different program than our annual inspections. I don't know if that fully answers your question, and maybe Austin, if you have anything else to add.
I, I think you've covered it pretty well. I think the thing that I would just say about it is that anytime you're talking about PG&E, we have typically, for any type of work, we have multiple programs and multiple layers that perform multiple kind of duties out there. So as Mark was saying, you have enhanced vegetation management, which is exactly that, above our routine maintenance, other compliance work that has to happen. So you will have multiple looks at a line, you'll have multiple crews going out, you'll have things that they look at, you know, for the basic requirement. In some cases, we're even revising those requirements and going, expanding beyond kind of the radius that we, we have to trim back. And then we're working with property owners on trees that, you know, maybe are further away, they're not necessarily in the compliance zone, that we would look to take for an additional layer of safety. So while you may not see, you know, a huge amount of mileage of EVM, all of that line has been inspected, all of that line, if there's anything that's close to the line within that compliance radius, has been trimmed back. All of those things are kind of occurring all the time on those lines. And, and it's always hard to get like the full picture because you have to take EVM plus the other three programs that we essentially run to make sure that the vegetation management program's safe.
That, that's helpful. When you, when you talk about, you know, I appreciated, Mark, you talking about different species of trees and how their kind of growth patterns are going to be different. Does PG&E track trees as they relate to the lines in, in a way that's like the, that respects the uniqueness of every kind of mile of, of line that's out there? In other words, do you use LiDAR or any other kind of point cloud analysis to, to track trees? Like what's your, what's your methodology?
So the answer to your question is, we do track the trees. And, and I, I'm hesitant to speak in, in a whole lot of detail because I almost feel like it might be helpful to have a vegetation management specialist come to a future meeting and maybe focus just specifically on the trees. Or, you know, depending on how valuable that is to council, certainly council member Hill or others, we could maybe do a two, two by two with a report out back to council or an administrative report kind of a thing, just to shorten it. But yes, LiDAR, tracking all the tree points, distance from the line, types of tree. I'm pretty sure, I never want to see the database of those trees. It's millions of, it's millions of trees. But yes, LiDAR in particular, you mentioned that also.
Got it. And just like my final question for, for now is, if, if community members, and I think this happened recently in my district, when community members encounter a, a, a safety, a safety risk scenario, say if there is a, an incident, should, when residents call, what is the expectation of what should happen when they make that phone call?
Absolutely. And, and, and we recently, we recently crossed paths in San Rafael visiting for something along, along these lines. No pun intended. I, I want to make a couple of points, and I hope people take a pen and paper and write this number down. If you see something that you think is hazardous, council members staff, community members, residents and business owners, I would encourage people to call 800-743-5000. That's PG&E's customer service line. The first thing I typically hear when I mention that is, well, I don't have time to wait for, for 20 minutes or 15 minutes, you know, for a customer service representative to answer. And I do know, when it gets busy, we have long wait times. I think that's improving, but it's something that needs improvement. The, to report a hazard or an emergency situation, whether it's related to electric or gas, the first thing that will come on is they'll ask, if you need to report a emergency or hazardous situation, press the number one. Someone will answer the phone within 30 seconds or faster. And I simply would encourage people to, ideally, we would have a very clear description of the location and address, across street. If it's electric, maybe somebody might have a photo of the, of the pole, and we may ask if there's some numbers on the pole, any information that people can provide. I'll say this very quickly too, for safety. People should obviously get away from the area if they think there's a hazard. If they're smelling gas or electric, please, before you make that phone call, clear away from that area a good block. And then they can report that. Well, what I'd also like to suggest is that, you know, from time to time, we'll have folks say, well, I, I saw some sparks or I saw something harking, or I saw something that looked like it was dangerous, and I called PG&E and I reported this. If people are seeing something of that nature and they're concerned there may be an ignition or a fire or whatever the thing, whatever that thing is, if they're smelling strong gas in an area, I also would just please beg people to call 911. You know, your first responders are the closest, they're right there. PG&E will dispatch people immediately, but there's no one closer than your own fire department, your police department. If there's any kind of road closures or evacuations or other things, they're well-trained in these things as well. We work, our public safety specialists work hand in hand with your public safety specialists for that training. And, and that partnership, and I just encourage people to not say, oh, well, you know, it's PG&E's lines, they, they look dangerous. I'll call that number. If there's a serious threat, please call 911. Austin, what, you got something to add there?
No, I, I think you covered all of it there. And really, the first priority needs to be the safety out there for the public. And so we, obviously, there is no judgment call on when you call 911 or if, or if you don't, right? We, we want you to take the most like serious amount of safety that you can with that situation. And I think kind of your initial question there, Councilmember Hill, was, you know, what is the experience? Again, Mark covered that. If you call and you hit that emergency or emergent line, you get someone within 30 seconds and they directly send the tag over to dispatch for the person to come out and look at that location. So that's how that experience should work. I know we, we had the situation that we kind of crossed paths on where there were some miscommunications between our field crew on the vegetation side and what they were reporting and how it was reported to our folks. But we think we shored that up, and we think we've kind of gotten to speak with the teams about that, and there is an understanding of kind of what happened in that situation. But for any resident, it, it should be 911 if you feel that there's an imminent threat. And then, you know, if it's utility-related, call the PG&E line and use that emergency line.
No, thank you for that. And I, I think you alluded to the fact that there was a corrective action on that kind of, I'll, I'll call it a mishandle, but it's assuring to hear this. I, I think we just want to continue to understand what that process and expectation is because that one gave me pause. But anyway, I will yield my time for other questions and, and public comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hill. Councilmember Micah.
Yeah, thank you so much for the presentation. Good to see you, Mark. So my question is about the, the lines. Given that, you know, it's such, now with the climate change and the drought and it is so, you know, our vegetation is so dry, so dangerous. I'm looking at the map where I work and where I live, and I'm like, oh, I'm right there. So I know that it's extremely expensive, but have you considered, I, I, in the presentation, I saw that you are considering, considering maybe three or four lines, that you are either covering them or putting them underground. Have you considered like putting the lines underground like you do with the gas?
Well, as our climate changes and as we're learning more about climate change and the, the world around us, PG&E is, is digging deeper. I keep using these metaphors and I'm not trying to make a joke. We are, we are digging deeper into undergirding our lines. And so I think it's, you know, it was all over the news. Our CEO made this announcement about a goal or an objective to, to underground 10,000 miles of lines. And I think she called it, you know, she alluded to it as sort of the, the moonshot speech. So I don't have at this time, and she mentioned this when she made the press, when she was making the press announcement. We don't have a lot of the details yet about how they're going to identify which lines they will prioritize, you know, where we would start and all that. I would have told you three months ago that typically it is a lot more cost-effective to, you know, remove the vegetation and remove the trees and harden the lines and do a lot of other work that we just talked about compared to undergrounding. But our CEO, with a, a new team of leaders with the company, with a new board of directors, is leaning into undergirding a lot more differently than we have in the past. And it's encouraging to see. I'm looking forward to getting more of that information. It's the question that everyone is asking. Where and how and when can we start to underground these lines? So I'll be dialoguing with Bill Guerin, Director Guerin, with Manager Schutz, with Mayor Cullen and others in the, in the future. I'm sure once we get some of those frequently asked questions answered. But yes, it's, it's something I think we'll be doing more of. 10,000 lines is a lot of undergirding, and it still takes a lot of time to plan and design and then construct, whether we're trenching or boring underground. So I just encourage people to have a reasonable expectation set that if we were to start doing something tomorrow for some of those high fire threat areas in San Rafael, it's possible that it could take several years or a couple of years to actually construct it. It will take some time to complete that.
Okay, thank you so much. Yeah, anything we can do to help bring those, you know, that project to San Rafael? Yeah, I would love to help. Thank you.
Thank you. I was trying to remember, Mark, when you had presented to the council before, and I can't remember if it was, I think it was last year before we had the new council on board. Some of the presentation was similar. It must have been in October of last year, September, I probably had the same thought. And at that point, you had mentioned during PSPS's, the possibility of having a generator that would be in downtown San Rafael. Can you speak to that? Because you didn't mention that today, and I just, that, that was, I'm just wondering where we were, where, what's the status of that?
Always very attentive to the details. Thank you for that. So where we are with that is we have generators available. We, we've taken a much more, and I didn't get into the details of this in the presentation and we could go back and look at it. The, we're using artificial intelligence and machine learning now. We, we've really broken down our, our ability to model weather and impacts and locations in, in our lines. And that's why I was talking a little bit more today about the, the one O one corridor. And, you know, less, less of a concern about the line, the transmission lines traveling over those hills because you really don't have that situation coming into San Rafael. So getting to your question, it's unlikely that we would be staging generators for that substation, which frankly, I'm thankful for. I, I was concerned about the impact on the residents and the potential noise and concerns about air quality from, from those generators. We do not anticipate a transmission level event. In other words, the winds are blowing strongly enough and the conditions are so severe that we would have to stop the power coming down from that substation at Highway thirty seven and one O one down to San Rafael. And, and then we'd have to bring in those generators. It's not something we expect. If we had an event that was so significant, it's possible that we would be able to bring the generators in. And then we will have a conversation about where would, where would we stage the generators and where would we put them? But at the moment, it's just, it's not something that we consider to be a high probability.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, let's open this up to public comment. I'll ask the city clerk to help us out.
Thank you. To comment on Zoom, please use the raised hand feature. And if you're calling in by telephone, please press star nine. Once you've heard the notification that I've asked you to unmute, please press star six to do so. Each speaker will have two minutes to provide public comment and then they will be muted once time has elapsed. And do you see two hands raised? We're ready for you.
Hi, yes. My name is Jennifer Miar and I live up on Bret Hart. And I am the lady that was part of that incident that occurred in July. And I just kind of wanted to comment on it and go over some of the things that Mark had indicated. And the first of which is that indicated that all of the vegetation was being inspected in our areas and they were inspected back in June. That being said, on July twenty third, it was my wooded area in the hills behind my home where we located the sparking and the arcing power lines, which almost caught fire. We did everything right. We contacted PG&E. We were told that an inspector was going to come out and inspect. And, you know, he drove by, closed out the ticket. We had to call again. I mean, it, it was really a challenging situation. So I really want to know, you know, how thoroughly really can we say that the vegetation inspections are? And if you guys are using LiDAR, why didn't it work in Pikmin Valley? What, I mean, what can be done to better enhance our chances of survival to PG&E's power lines in getting entangled in the vegetation? That's it. That's all I have. And thank you guys for being here. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Hi, good evening. My name's David Smith and I'd like to thank the gentleman from PG&E for being here. As you can probably tell, I'm originally from the UK and I've lived here in Marin a little over thirty years now. And back when I lived in the UK, power lines in towns and villages were underground. The high tension lines that carried the, the high voltage electricity were above ground, but they were on huge steel pylons far above trees level. And, and then the, the normal wisdom is, is that the US is ten years ahead of the UK. And so that's a forty year differential. And so what's PG&E been doing for forty years by still putting power lines above ground and through trees? Mark, you said that, that hardening is more cost effective, but hardening hasn't worked. If you ask any of the people in, in Northern California suffering through the fires right now. And, and in the UK, even in the beauty spots now, they're putting the high tension lines underground because it's so much nicer to look at than having all these power poles. So I realize this isn't a question and answers thing, but just my point is, is this stuff needs to be underground. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
I see no other hands raised, but I am going to give everyone about ten seconds or so. Again, if you're calling in by telephone, please press star nine. And if you're using Zoom, please use the raised hand feature. I see no further public comment.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I will close the public comment and bring it back. I think the second caller was more comment about undergrounding and I think you did answer that already, Mark, and gave an explanation. And I think the first caller, the question I had out of that was, and granted, it was a very specific incident, but maybe further talking about the vegetation inspection details. I know Councilmember Hill also talked about it. Anything else that you could add to reassure our community that the procedures are there in place and they'll continue to, to be followed, you know, in, in the way that keeps everybody safe?
So I'm going to defer to Austin here. You know, Austin, he works a lot directly with our, our customers. And so just want to clarify, I typically work with the city managers and city staff and council members. Austin's wheelhouse and, and his, and his staff are directly with, with customers. So maybe Austin, you'd like to speak to that a little bit?
Sure, yeah. And so part of it, you know, was in my answer a little bit earlier about how our enhanced vegetation management program works. We, we typically have multiple programs. We have multiple inspections, multiple layers of safety and security on these things with different technologies. We have LiDAR, we have individuals that go out and look at it. To give a little background on this particular scenario, it was an enhanced vegetation management crew that was out there performing work. In the area that they were in, they saw the, the situation. They notified the homeowner at, at that home that this was happening in their backyard and they were the ones who called it in and were on the phone with the customer as well as our one eight hundred line to get that tag dispatched. So you, you have kind of different crews doing different work and they did exactly what they should. They saw. Sorry, did you guys lose me? All right. Sorry, I lost you for a second. They did exactly what they should do. They saw a safety situation. They called it in. They stood, they stood down and they stood by at the situation. Where we had a particular problem is that they didn't convey their location correctly and they didn't convey primary versus secondary line. So we sent a troubleman out. He went to the location, but he went to the primary pole, the one that was out on the street, not behind the home. He didn't see anything. He went to a bench crew up the street and said, hey, did you guys call this in? Did you see anything? They said, no. So he closed out the tag. The crew did again, exactly what they should do. They did not get someone to relieve them. They saw that there was an issue. They called it in again and said, hey, we have to have someone come out here. The second man came out with the proper location, deenergized the line, let the bench work commence, and they were able to essentially fix the situation. Where we saw the corrective actions were, one, that, that crew, while using a valid method of communication and when we, we get to customers, they have a direct line to our electric team. They, they could have called our dispatch directly. They did not need to go through that avenue. They could have called directly, been on the phone with that T man directly, had a direct one-to-one communication instead of trying to go through someone else. And then, you know, they didn't give kind of the proper location. Part two was working with our T man to understand like, hey, if we have something like this called in, let's do some more research on this. Make sure that if you go out there and you don't see something and it's being communicated to you that there is an issue, let, let's make sure that we're calling back in, following up. It was really a miscommunication between those two crews. But again, because we have multiple layers of safety that we put on there with our crews and our people, the crew stood by, the crew called it in again, we redspatched someone, they were able to fix the situation. And we were also able to look at our veg teams and say, hey, you know, you did the right thing by calling it in, but how do we get better at making sure that none of these things are missed? As Mark mentioned, we're inspecting thousands of miles of line. We're using all these different technologies. We have multiple crews. It's making sure that we have a very clear picture on each and every line, that we are doing everything we can. We're identifying every potential location. But honestly, we're, we're not going to find a thousand out of a thousand, right? There, there will be things that will happen like this. It's really a matter of what our response is in that situation. And that crew was looking for these things. They saw that thing. They called it in. When they didn't get the response they wanted, they made sure that they stayed out there and they got the response on the backend. And it's our responsibility to make sure that if there is a miscommunication, we fix that. We have a new regional vice president. His name's Ron Richardson. He was part of the team that met out on site with the customers. His job and task is essentially be responsible for this area and making sure that it's safe, that it's fire safe. And he's taking a special interest in this because I think it's a good example of how, you know, how we need to get our communication down. We need to be spot on with all of these things. So if I had to distinctly say to our customers kind of one statement, it's that, you know, it's not that we're not going to make mistakes. It's not that we're not going to have things slip through. It's that we have multiple layers in place to make sure that these things are caught. We have procedures in place to make sure that we are correcting them and that these, these situations don't happen. And as Mark mentioned earlier, everyone can kind of do their part in that. Call nine one one. If you see something, say something. There's a new app that we have that you can, that's in the beta testing phase. We can actually take pictures of situations and send them into us. We're trying to improve those things all the time and improve our communication with our crews because this is a serious situation. It's obviously very important to San Rafael and the residents there. And we want to make sure they understand how serious we take all of those things.
Thank you, Austin. Appreciate additional background. Yes, Mark.
Sorry, it's just Mark here. If I could just, you know, just add on and to reinforce this. I think sometimes people understandably think of PG&E as being this large monolithic corporation, has an office in San Francisco. A, a lot of our employees live in the communities, work here, we're very close by, we're, we're very, we're networked with the communities and work closely. You know, no different than, than community art projects or, or supporting local businesses or you're just being engaged, networking the community. We, we need the help of the community too, to be better. We know we need to be better. Sometimes we just don't know where and how. And that feedback, whether it comes to council members or through our hazards and emergency reporting hotline or through public works, all of that feedback helps us, you know, find those locations. But I just implore people, if somebody thinks there's a very hazardous or serious situation, yeah, please call us and let us know on that number. But I just wouldn't hesitate to, you know, within reason. If you have serious concerns, call nine one one. I don't want to overburden or overtax the, the police and fire departments. But I also want to make sure that we were safe.
Yes, no, thank you. I think they would concur that if someone's unsure and they see something they're not, that they're concerned about, that nine one one is a good place to start. Councilmember Hill, let's, so any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to express gratitude for you coming here tonight, Mark and Austin, and, and addressing concerns of our community. I know that we want to obviously be partners to you to make sure that we're getting the word out, that we're able to assure of what we're doing. And I also appreciated, Austin, you walking through in depth out of how that corrective action looked like. I think that scenario did, did deserve that, that attention. So I appreciated that. But yeah, as even handed as possible, we also understand too, we need to deliver energy to our community. And, you know, we're obviously on a pretty big journey. There's a lot of tragedy that has happened in years past. Obviously, we want to make sure that we can mitigate that as much as possible for our community and, and the region. So thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Micah.
There you go. Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to echo Councilmember Hill, the, the same thing. Really appreciate you being here, being proactive. My, my comment again is about the underground. It was interesting. I grew up in Spain and one of the things that shocked me when I came to the US was the fact that the electrical lines were actually outside. I, I only see that like in rural areas. So, so yeah, I'm excited to hear about the new leadership committing to the underground. And again, anything we can do to bring it here, not just to San Rafael, but to Marin, because I feel fire doesn't really understand cities. So anything we can do, I would love to support you. So thank you so much.
Thank you. And I'll just reiterate, thank you both, Mark and Austin for coming. This is just so, it's topical. And unfortunately, it's been topical now for a longer part of the year. And the more that we can be in conversation, Mark, you're always really great about contacting the city when there's an event that might be on board. Hopefully, knock on wood, that we don't have any PSPS coming up. So I really appreciate that you are proactive in that. And, and I think for the community, I would underscore that, trying to figure out what is our role in it. And even though one of the commenters wasn't sure about the role of hardening our homes, I actually believe that hardening our homes is a great way to start. In fact, in our next item, we will turn it over to Quinn Gardner and I think she'll say the same thing. It is something that all of us can do as residents of San Rafael, is to harden our homes and join Firewise, have a Firewise neighborhood. So God forbid, if something were to get out of hand, that there's less ignition sources for us to deal with. So this is unfortunate, I think the new normal. I mean, as I alluded to in my mayoral remarks, the UN climate report is very, very clear. We're not going back to the childhood that I had, you know, that, that's just not it. It, it's something different. So really, how do we continue to be in conversation? And I think both Austin and Mark alluded to that in conversation as we go forward to, to figure out these issues and, and to make you guys as good as you can be and our, working with you as good as we can be.
We are close by. We're available. If there are further discussions you would like to have as a council, we get a phone call from, you know, Director Guerin or, or Manager Schutz or, or you, Mayor. We will be, we're, we're here. It's your pleasure.
Wonderful. Well, thank you. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Austin. Really appreciate your time tonight. And as I said, this rolls in really nicely because our next item is a proclamation and recognition of National Preparedness Month. So thank you both and Quinn Gardner. Yep, thank you. All right. We are joined by Quinn Gardner, San Rafael Fire Department Emergency Manager Coordinator. You have a very long title and I'm delighted you're here. The month is actually, I think it's in September, but we wanted to go ahead. Hey, the more time and more proactive we can be, the better. I will read part of the proclamation. It was quite long. And then I'll turn it over to you, Quinn, because boy, the more that we can continue to educate and support our community in this area, the better. So in recognition of National Preparedness Month, whereas in San Rafael, our community is susceptible to human caused and natural disasters, including earthquakes, wildland fires, floods, pandemics and other large scale emergencies we cannot predict. And whereas, when large scale emergencies occur, professional first responders and disaster workers will be overwhelmed and the need, and need the support of prepared and trained residents. And working in partnership with our community members, community emergency response teams, CERT, neighborhood response groups, NRGs and community organizations, we can minimize the loss of lives and injuries, reduce the impact of property in the natural environment and more quickly help our community find a new normal post emergency. And whereas, the city of San Rafael will join the nation in emphasizing this year's themes, prepare to protect. That's the theme because preparing for disasters is protecting everyone you love. Now therefore, I, Kate Cullen, Mayor of San Rafael, on behalf of the city, do hereby proclaim the month of September twenty twenty one as National Preparedness Month. And in doing so, urge all residents and community members to take the necessary emergency, emergency preparation steps to increase our community's resiliency. So with that, I will turn it over to Quinn, who I know I've learned from. I was just re, looking at my go bag and making sure that it was up to date. So I will turn it over to you.
Well, thank you, Mayor Kate, and thank you, council, and thank you for everyone that's tuning in. It is, we are even extra prepared for September, a few weeks ahead of September to declare it National Preparedness Month. And National Preparedness Month really focuses on what you as individuals can do that overall then strengthen and build resiliency across our community. So there's a lot of things that we're doing as a, as a city and I'll touch on some of those just to make sure our residents know that we're not only asking things of them. But first, I want to touch on some of the things that residents really can do. And, and the proclamation mentions getting involved with your community, whether it's CERT groups, neighborhood response groups, climate action groups, you name it, Firewise communities, like you mentioned, Mayor Kate. There's a lot of great opportunities, kind of pick what fits you and, and your level of engagement, amateur radio operators. There really is kind of a flavor for everyone. And if you have questions about it, I'm really excited, actually, starting this week with a partnership with Age Friendly, we're going to be down at Dining Under the Lights, doing some outreach, helping folks get signed up for Alert Marin. I know Councilmember Kurtz mentioned that before she had a jump off. So that's the first, first actionable step. I want to make sure everybody's done is be signed up for your emergency alerts. The easiest and most important one is alertmarin.org. And then there's a few other things after that, but But the big thing for everyone to understand is they are opt-in systems. You're not automatically enrolled in emergency alerts. So you need to opt in and that's how we share information like evacuation. So it's really important. The second piece of that is what do you do when you get that notification, right? And that's having a plan. I'm in the middle of listening to a book right now called Unthinkable. Yes, even my, my casual life is disaster focused, but it's all about disaster psychology. And the author is basically going through this idea of how do, everyone goes from, basically from denial to deliberation and then to decision points. And through preparedness, we get to the ability to make a decision quicker and we're more likely to make a good decision. And we don't want people to get hung up in denial or deliberation. And so when you get that emergency alert, believe it, get past denial, and then you should know what to do. And so when you make your emergency plan, you've already figured out your deliberation and now you get into that decision and that action point. And then that, that action point probably involves stuff, which is why go bags and go supplies and disaster kits are so important. So there's a lot of good tips on our website, a lot of great information on Ready Marin is another great website that I really encourage everybody to check out. And I also have a one hour to get ready presentation that I'll be doing over the month of September, virtually probably now. But it's also recorded and available now. If anybody wants to get on that before September strikes, I'd encourage everybody to do so. So please, I ask all of our residents, get engaged, get signed up for alerts, have your plan, think about the stuff in your go bag. I think I just went through mine the other day and turns out my rain jacket, which is also my reflective clothing, was like deteriorating. So if you don't go through it, you don't know. So make sure you stay up on all that. And like I said, we are do, we're all, we are asking our residents to be prepared and like the first part of the proclamation mentions, because we know first responders will be overwhelmed. We know our capacity is limited. We know we don't have enough on duty staff for major disasters. We can handle routine calls on a daily basis really well. Big things take time to get enough skilled and correct people in place for. And so what neighbors can do and how neighbors help each other and are connected with those groups is so important. But quickly, just, I think the wildfire action plans, probably the easiest thing are 38 points. I was just training a new seasonal inspector today and kind of going through the plan and realizing how many things we're checking off, which is really exciting. So we're increasing our staffing. We've just hit over 8,000 defensible space evaluations in the city. Almost every wildland urban interface property. And we're going to keep on going until at least Thanksgiving to make sure we can get to every, every parcel in the city, then including follow up. And through that defensible space evaluation, we're able to really provide individual prescriptions for, for homeowners and residents, so they know how to make their property as safe and adapted to wildfires possible. Like you mentioned, Mayor Kate, that that's going to prevent, you know, if something does start, how do we keep it small? How do we keep it on the ground? And how do we keep it in a way we contain it quickly without a lot of damage? So the work that you do around your property is super important. We've got a lot of projects going in open space. Our goats left a few weeks ago. Hopefully, everybody got a chance to see them munching around the city. We added a few grazing sites this year. We've got a few new ones planned for next year as well. We're doing some fire road work here, probably start in the next couple of months to create shaded fuel breaks, working through a lot of environmental compliance and around bird nesting surveys and all that good stuff. So really doing kind of our part to make sure we're mitigating as much as we can in a really sustainable way. And so appreciate everyone's support, really to Measure C as well as dealing with adaptation planning and sea level rise and of course, the pandemic. So there's a lot going on. I know it can feel overwhelming, but the most important thing is to realize that you do have the ability to take really tangible steps that will not only increase how comfortable you are after disaster, but could really impact whether or not you survive one. So just kind of on that note, even just within the last, what, 48 hours? Another patient earthquake that's already looking pretty devastating. We are an earthquake country. We don't mention them as much anymore because of the fire pandemic drought and everything else. But remember to be prepared for those as well. So thanks for the time this evening, I appreciate it.
Thank you. And can you tell folks how they could sign up for the Get Ready workshop? I think I've taken it twice and I learned something both times. And virtual would work just as well. I mean, the information is great.
Yeah, so it'll all be on the website and we'll push it out on our social media handles as well. So you can follow either the fire department website or the SROES handles. We'll get those scheduled here pretty quickly. We're again, we're ahead of the schedule right now for September. So we're just finalizing kind of our schedule of events for the month.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Well, before you leave, I see on my agenda that the city clerk would like us to have public comment on this item.
Oh, we're.
So I will open up the public comment, public comment on proclamation. I don't think we've normally done that, but I think it's a good thing to do, so.
Thanks. Yes, if you're participating by telephone, please press star nine. And if you're participating on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. There will be two minutes for public comments. You will be muted once time has elapsed. And I'll give everyone about 10 seconds. I see no hands raised as of right now. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment. And thank you, Quinn, for all that you do to help our community become more resilient and safer and to know what to do. As you said, it can be overwhelming, but we know, yep, see, you're getting a thumbs up.
Perfect.
Right.
Chief.
Absolutely. Chief, did you want to add anything before we go to the next item?
I just want to thank Quinn and her staff. They've been very phenomenal. And as you stated, or as rather you heard or state, the number of inspections that have been completed this year, astronomical. This is something that we targeted last year. She's done an excellent job, her and her staff of selecting, onboarding and training the current defensible space inspection staff and helping to just really build a really robust and solid program. And because of that, the things that we're accomplishing right now are precedent setting. And she's setting the bar really high for, for future years to come. And so I just owe her a debt of gratitude, her and, and her excellent team that she's assembled. So that's all I would like to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief White. An excellent thing to add and we, Quinn is always setting the bar higher. We just know that. I mean, and so thank you, thank you. And we look forward to having a very safe September, October, until it starts raining again. So thank you so much.
See that rain. Thank you all, I appreciate it. Have a great evening.
Bye. Okay, so we have a few more items on our agenda this evening. Hi, Chief Spiller. The next one, we have a public hearing on the authorization for background checks. I will turn it over to you, chief.
Good evening, Mayor Kate. Thank you. Good evening, members of the council. The item before you tonight is titled Authorization for Background Checks is a Dual Action Item. The first is the consideration of an ordinance for the city of San Rafael, adding chapter 2.22 of the San Rafael Municipal Code entitled Background Checks. The second is the consideration to adopt a resolution for the city council of the city of San Rafael, authorizing the city to access state and federal summary criminal history information for new employees and licensee background information through the Department of Justice. So if you consider this tonight, excuse me, I will share that since 2008, the city has implemented an administrative policy to take fingerprints and run a background check on every applicant who has accepted employment with the city of San Rafael. This policy within the city of San Rafael was adopted to facilitate the requirements for a background check prior to employment and for certain types of licenses or certifications. A good example of that is cannabis operator license within the city. Specific sections of the California Penal Code authorize local agencies or cities, in our case, to access state and local criminal history information, essentially summary information as it relates to criminal history for employment purposes or for licensing or certification purposes. The Penal Code further authorized the city to access federal criminal history summary information by transmitting fingerprint images and related information to the FBI. Recently, the federal government has strengthened its requirements for obtaining access to the national criminal database, which requires specific authorization by local jurisdiction's governing body, the council in this case, to receive such information. So the city of San Rafael is therefore required to have specific council authorization in order to continue the practice of conducting background checks prior to city employment or licensing as it, as it relates. As a matter of practice, the San Rafael Police Department abstains, excuse me, obtains criminal history information by transmitting fingerprints to the California Department of Justice. When a check against a national database is required, and it typically is, the state acts, the state DOJ acts on the city's behalf and transmit those fingerprints and the associated information to the FBI. The city has been advised by the state Department of Justice that the FBI is now requiring such requests to be authorized both by an ordinance and a resolution by the governing body within the local jurisdiction. Typically, a resolution and an ordinance are not required to implement city council action, but the FBI in this case is requiring both. So the proposed ordinance and resolution before you authorize background checks to be conducted before employment with the city or in such circumstances where the city's municipal code requires a successful background check prior to the issuance of a city issued license or permit. The adoption of the ordinance and resolution formalizes the authority for the police department to continue the longstanding practice of conducting background checks for these purposes. So if approved, the resolution will become immediately effective and the ordinance will return to the next city council member for a final adoption. There's no cost impacts to this recommended action. The police department staff already facilitates fingerprinting and submission of background information to the DOJ. So given this information, staff is recommending that the council advance an ordinance, adding chapter 2.22 to the San Rafael Municipal Code entitled Background Checks. And secondarily, staff is recommending the adoption of the resolution authorizing the city to access state and federal summary criminal history information for new employees and required licensees through the FBI. With that, Mayor Kate and members of the council, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you, chief. Councilmember Hill.
I have no questions. I thought that the report was, was straightforward and I understood why we're being asked to, to pass the resolution, or pass the ordinance and the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mica.
Yeah, I have no questions. It makes sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess mine's a question, comment, because it is a lot of information. There was a lot of information in the staff report. But if you could summarize it, we're going to, we're not changing the practices that we're already doing, other than it's more a reporting mechanism. But the practices that we've had in the past, we're carrying forward in the same way. Is that a fair summary?
I think that's a very fair summary. I think if you were to try to describe this, I, I think that the federal government wants brighter light, that we are, that the governing body of the city, that the city council is accepting by resolution and ordinance, the, the background information. And it's not just a, you know, here, here's the info that you want. It's, it's adopted formally by the governing body.
Okay. That's what it sounded like I wanted to clarify. Thank you. City, city clerk, we are ready for public comment.
Thank you. If you're, if you'd like to comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. Or if you're participating by telephone, please press star nine. And once the host is inviting you to speak, you'll need to press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker will have two minutes to provide public comments and then will be muted once time has elapsed. I currently see no hands raised. I'll give everyone a few more seconds.
Okay.
I see no public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. I will close the public comment and bring it back for an action. And I know that both of these should be read and they are two actions. So wait for a motion.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Thank you.
I would make, I make a motion to pass to print an ordinance of the city of San Rafael City Council, adding chapter 2.22 to the San Rafael Municipal Code entitled Background Checks.
Thank you.
And I'll second.
Moved in second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Yedon Scalotti.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries three zero.
And I will further move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city to access state and federal summary criminal history for new employee and licensee background information to the Department of Justice.
And I'll second that.
Moved in second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Yedon Scalotti.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries three zero. Thank you, chief, for the presentation and the follow up. And now we'll be on compliance. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, our final agenda item. I see Director Judasee and our consultant Barry Miller. It is a San Rafael 2023-2031 housing element, which seems super far away. And then before we know it, it is on our doorstep. And I guess that's it, we're on our doorstep. So I will turn it over to the two of you to present this item.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. I don't have a whole lot to say, other than Barry Miller, who has been working hard on our general plan, will be presenting the presentation tonight.
Great, thank you, Ally. And I'm just going to jump right in and let's just move forward. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, great.
Great, great, terrific. Yeah, so you just approved the general plan 2040 at your last meeting and we're moving right ahead with one of the implementing actions, which is the update of the housing element. So to recap, this is a required element of every general plan. This is where we have our city's policies for producing housing, conserving the housing we have, and particularly focusing on affordable housing. We are basically, a lot of the contents of this element are prescribed by state law. There's a lot of statute that deals specifically with what you must have in your housing element. But we do have some flexibility to incorporate our local issues and make sure that this is responsive. I do want to point out that we are currently in what's called the fifth cycle housing element, which runs from 2015 to 2023. What we're working on now is the sixth cycle housing element, which will begin on January 2023 and run for eight years through January 2031. So unlike the other elements of the general plan, the housing element is the only element that requires submittal to a state agency for certification. We do have to submit this to state HCD, Housing and Community Development. They will review it and make sure that it meets all the government code requirements. I wanted to point out that just because we didn't cover housing in the other elements of general plan 2040, there's a lot in those elements you see listed on the screen that you adopted at your last meeting that relate to housing. Importantly, the identification of housing sites is something that really flows from the land use element. So we have our land use map and the housing sites that we're looking at are really rooted in that element. There is a lot of flexibility in how you can organize your element, but basically it comes down to these five kind of buckets right here. There's an evaluation of how we're doing in implementing the last housing, housing element. There's a needs assessment, which is really kind of the deep dive into census data and looking at our demographics. This is really where you can do sort of a bottom up approach to looking at housing. What do we specifically need in San Rafael? What does the data tell us about our local needs? There's a constraints analysis, which looks at what are all the obstacles to producing housing in the city? A resources section that talks about our financial resources, other resources in the community for creating housing, and then the goals, policies and actions, which are really the core of the element that provide the roadmap for the future. This is just kind of a recap of what's in the existing housing element. I won't go through all of these, but there are some key terms here. Conservation of the housing stock, production of new housing, affordability, fair housing, housing for people with special needs, removal of obstacles, collaboration and public engagement. So these are the kinds of things that we think about when we are developing housing policy. And this update is an opportunity to revisit all of the existing policies. I'm just going to spend a minute or two talking about the RENA. This is the Regional Housing Needs Allocation. In some respects, this is a top down process as well as a bottom up process. So we're not only looking at our local housing needs, we're also looking at our regional fair share. This is a process that's been in effect for over 50 years, where the state basically requires every jurisdiction to plan to meet the housing needs of everyone in the community. And that everyone in the community is quantified first by the state of California and then by the Association of Bay Area Governments. We're actually given an assignment. I'm not going to dwell too much on the detail of these slides, but the point of this slide is to show that we as a region, as the nine county Bay Area, are consistently falling short in the production of housing for low and very low income people. This is the progress that's being made towards meeting those regional. This is the progress that's being made towards meeting those regional housing targets during the last three cycles, including the one we're in now. You can see we're, we're doing really well producing above moderate income housing as a region, but not very well producing low and very low income housing. So the RENA number for the nine county Bay Area for this upcoming eight year cycle has increased by two point three four times in the last cycle, the one we're in now, the region had to produce one hundred and eighty-seven thousand nine hundred and ninety-four units. You can see here, the next cycle, the assignment has gone up for the nine county Bay Area. We need to plan for four hundred and forty-one thousand units and about forty percent of that needs to be suitable for very low and low income households. Again, I'm going to skip this. The point of this slide is really just to show you that there is a complicated process that was developed by ABA with a thirty-six member committee that was made up of elected officials and housing advocates and others from around the Bay Area to develop a formula for how to allocate that four hundred and forty-one thousand units to the individual cities and counties in the Bay Area, using things like equity, opportunity, mobility and transportation to determine how those units should be allocated. This is kind of where the rubber meets the road. The result of that methodology is that Marin County cities have a much higher housing assignment in the next cycle than they did in the last cycle. You can see San Rafael's number increases from just over a thousand units to thirty-two hundred and twenty units. It's a two hundred and twenty percent increase. It is the largest increase of any city in Marin County. However, if you look at this on a percentage basis, you can see that the individual cities, many of which are small residential communities, have much larger increases percentage wise in their arena for the next cycle. So places like Corte Madura and Larkspur and San and Solmar are going to have to plan for a whole lot more housing in this next cycle than they have in the past. Some of these communities are appealing their assignments, but the track record is very few communities are successful in their appeals. So this breaks down the allocation of the RENA by income and on the left you see the current allocation for San Rafael and on the right you see the new allocation for the next cycle. They're not that different from each other. I do want to point out that the percentage of units that need to be suitable for low and very low income households has gone up from a thirty-nine percent of the total allocation to forty-two percent of the total, which is about thirteen hundred and fifty units of low and very low income. And again, we're, what we're responsible for doing in the housing element is creating the capacity for the private and nonprofit sectors to build that quantity of housing in the community. And we do that by designating specific sites in the community as housing opportunity sites and then making an estimate of how many units of housing can be built on those sites. And you see here the range of different housing sites and the types of sites. It's not just vacant lots, it's underutilized sites, it's commercial and mixed use properties where housing is allowed and so on. And we're fortunate in this case because we have just gone through the general plan update and we identified through the general plan update, the capacity for four thousand four hundred units. So we're actually not in a position where we need to rezone housing to meet our RENA target because we've already created that capacity primarily through the downtown precise plan, but also through the general plan twenty forty land use map. Let me just very quickly touch on the new rules for housing element contents. We have some new limits on carrying forward opportunity sites from the previous housing element. Basically, a state is saying you can't keep recycling the same housing sites over and over again in each of your housing elements. If they're not being developed, maybe there's a reason. So you need to start creating incentives for building on those sites. If you're going to keep counting them, you have to change the rules for those sites so they're easier to develop. SB six eighty-six is one of the biggest changes. This requires a lot of additional data collection with the aim of affirmatively furthering fair housing. And this is a new requirement that cities in Southern California are actually all working on their elements now. And they have sort of, they're sort of setting the precedent for how to address this issue in the housing element, looking at fair housing issues and working to avoid to, to avoid segregation in the community and displacement. Some additional rules. Let me just keep going through this. We also need to, need to amend the safety element concurrently with the general plan. There are some new safety element requirements that came up during the general plan update. And so we will have to work with the fire department and with, with the emergency preparedness staff to identify evacuation routes in the city and to identify areas with limited ingress and egress. We were working on that process. So this is the schedule for the update. It's roughly a fifteen month process to get back to the city council with a draft for adoption. You will be hearing from us pretty frequently between now and then because we want to keep checking in as we did with the general plan with progress reports. We'll also be making progress reports to the city council. And as you'll see on the next slide, we're proposing to create a housing element working group as part of the process. Essentially, it's a, it's kind of a compressed schedule. We need to create a working draft that we could submit to HCD for their review by next June and then incorporate the state comments and bring it back to the commission and council for adoption next October. There's a robust community engagement program as part of this process. I'll mention the working group in just a minute. We have community workshops that will be taking place, focus group meetings and stakeholder interviews. There's a Spanish language outreach program that we're working on in collaboration with the Canal Alliance. We have a consultant that we're bringing on board to help us with outreach and engagement with the Spanish speaking community. And we will have a website for this project. We can answer questions the council may have about the engagement program following the presentation. What we wanted to get to before closing is the fact that we are proposing a working group with twelve members. You can see the representation of that working group here on the slide. I want to just point out that that last out large member, we would like for that member to have a focus on equity, diversity and inclusion to bring that lens to the work of the group. About half of the folks on this group are housing advocacy organizations and the others are other community stakeholder groups representing environmental organizations and neighborhood organizations and so on. Tonight, we are providing an opportunity for public comment, council comment, any feedback you might have on the working group and we're asking that you accept the informational report that we've provided. And I've put my phone number and email address on this, on the slide for those who are interested in finding out more about the project. We are going to be creating a website in the next few weeks. And please do check back for more information. And with that, I'll end the presentation and we'll come back for questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Barry. Excellent presentation. The staff report was so well done as well. I mean, the whole part just on and I and it made sense not to go over it tonight because you can read it as all the state mandates and all the, all the laws that have come down and all the changes. So for anyone out there, I strongly encourage to go read the staff report because that was really, really well done and made it helped me to understand how it would show up, a bunch of those laws that have been passed in San Rafael. So thank you. So we will take questions from the council and then we'll take questions from the public and then we'll come back for comments. So councilmember Mica.
Yeah, thank you so much for the report. I agree with Mayor Kate. It was very well done. I guess my question is around, you know, the RENA numbers. I know that we, it's great to hear that is something that we can achieve because I hear from other cities that is not the case. Do you think that there's going to be any changes in the requirements at the state level based on that? I know a lot of cities are complaining about it, like they cannot achieve those numbers.
Yeah, so it's, it's a zero sum game when it comes to the RENA number, which means that if other communities appeal and are successful, that the units that are taken away from those cities have to land somewhere else in another city. And we, San Rafael did not submit an appeal, but we did submit a letter saying our number is already the highest in the county and it's already been increased. We don't believe it's fair to put additional units that are taken out of some of the other communities into our community. It may be a moot point because those appeals are almost never successful. In Southern California, there were fifty cities that appealed and only two of the appeals were successful and they both were because of technical errors in the methodology, not because a city said, we don't have the land, we don't have the capacity. So we don't really see that happening in this cycle.
Yeah, well, that's, that's great to know. And yeah, I'm excited. I don't really have any questions. I look forward to seeing the working group. I would love to see like where you have mapped out like the different housing elements. And always, you know, keeping an eye on, making sure that the low and very low income units are not going to be in the same place, but they are going to be distributed around the city. So that's my only comment.
I think that was actually part of one of the state mandates that has come through. So it's actually, it's already to be in compliance to the state. That is one of the factors. So councilmember Hill is having computer issues, but he's still with us. So if you can unmute councilmember Hill, we'll just listen to your questions.
All right, I'll do a sound check. Can folks hear me? My computer is not really working anymore.
Nope, that's fine. We can hear you perfectly. Go ahead.
Thank you. For the sake of clarification, and by the way, I will say before any of my questions, I thought that the staff report was outstanding in this presentation. I think further elaborated on on how you're thinking about the, the housing element. I, I will comment, oh, actually, go to the questions first. So I've known that loss. I noticed that in the staff report, it mentions identifying the need to identify closer to four thousand housing units against the thirty-two twenty that is our target. Can you elaborate further on why that is? And I think you touched on it a little bit in the presentation, but just to kind of further explain why we need to have over about twenty-five percent.
Sure. The reason for that is that we need to have the capacity to meet that thirteen hundred and seventy-nine units of low and very low income housing throughout that entire eight year period. And if those, some of those housing opportunity sites are used for other uses like commercial uses or market rate housing, we lose those from our inventory. So we basically need to, when we approve development on these housing opportunity sites, need to find that we still have adequate capacity to meet our RENA for low and very low income housing on other sites in the community, which means we need a buffer. Because if we just, if we just designate the absolute minimum and then we use one of our sites for another purpose, we don't, we can't make our numbers anymore. So there's no magic way to figure out what that buffer is, but it's generally about twenty-five. We're, we're looking at about twenty-five percent of the total.
Thank you. I had another clarifying question about, actually, you actually addressed my questions in the course of your presentation, so I'm done with my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Hill. Way to roll with the technology challenges. I just had two questions. And this, we've talked about this before, in the RENA numbers, does it look like the state is going to allow us to count senior living units going ahead? Because that is something that San Rafael is continuing to have built in our community and it reflects our aging community. Can you speak to that, Barry?
Sure. They typically will allow you to count units if they have a kitchen and a private kitchen and bathroom. So if it's an independent living unit with a kitchen and bath, you know, assisted living, that's an apartment can be counted. If it's congregant care, nursing, things like that, you usually cannot count those toward the RENA.
And it's something, I've actually talked about it with Senator McGuire and I will bring it up with them. It doesn't make sense to me because what they're finding is sometime with senior, sometimes with senior care, the congregant living is actually more, has better health outcomes for individuals because they come together to dine. And so I think one of our projects that will be built in San Rafael does not have a kitchen. It might have a a sink and I, I mean, I don't know, I don't want to get into it now, but it does seem like there can be further advocacy on the part of San Rafael at the state level. It just, that just makes no sense to me. Okay. And then my other question, it's kind of a question comment, but on the outreach and I know, and I would actually trying to think, because I would like to hear from the council too about the makeup of that group, but I, but I have two questions. One is on the last one, you said the at large person has expertise in the diversity, equity, inclusion. Are you saying that that is something that they're either a professional that they work in the DEI space, as it were? That was how I understood it, but I, but you hadn't described it that way. I wanted to clarify.
Well, that would be ideal. I think it's someone who has some expertise. They may not be employed in that space, but someone who can represent that perspective, either because they serve on a commission or board in that capacity. And I may ask, I should give credit to councilmember Hill. We, we heard from him that that would be a desirable quality of the at large representative and we concurred with that. He may have more guidance on how we can go about finding such a person.
Okay. Well, I just want to clear, yeah, and he will definitely give guidance, I'm sure, when we get down to the comment part, but I just want to make sure, I want to make sure I understood what that was. And then also, one thing that really struck me in the staff report was the focus on housing for people who are unhoused, for the homeless population. That came through loud and clear. The state mandates are coming through on that. And I would suggest, and it, would it be possible to have one of those community meetings at our support service area that is currently in San Rafael? Right now, the timing works with your timing because you're doing the community work over the next couple of months and I'm sure we could work with Lynn Murphy and have folks there give an opportunity to give input on the community where they are unhoused. So I guess, I'm hoping that, I guess it's more a comment, but it's also a question in terms of outreach, how you were going to be going about getting community input.
Right. That's a great suggestion. It's something, we're, we're in the process of putting together a community engagement strategy and can look at that as one of the components. Definitely some kind of a meeting or group conversation would be great.
Wonderful. Thank you. Okay. Let me open this up for public comment. I know there was one person who had called in earlier, so hopefully he's still on the line for this agenda item. Thank you, city clerk.
Thank you. If you're participating on Zoom and would like to provide public comment, please use the raised hand feature. And if you're participating by telephone, please press star nine. And once you've heard the notification that I'm inviting you to speak, you'll need to press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker will have two minutes to provide public comment and then we'll be muted once time has elapsed. And I do see a couple of hands raised.
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, and thank you, Reese, for commenting during this section. Thank you.
Oh, most definitely. One of various prescriptions was the removal of regulatory obstacles. On that front, I have several ideas. I'd like to call for the elimination of mandates for minimum lot sizes, minimum lot widths and then building sizes. Arbitrary minimum requirements like these limit our ability to get value from our city's land that's scarce enough to begin with. We should eliminate minimum parking requirements for the same reason. Developers know what the market demands and if they're wrong, that's their problem. We shouldn't make it our responsibility to force developers to build certain things when if they're wrong, the market will punish them heavily enough. For the same reason, we should also eliminate minimum setback requirements. If you own an acre of land, you should be permitted to build to the edge of that acre. Senate Bill Nine is currently making its way through the assembly, the California State Assembly, whatever it's fate, we shouldn't wait for it. We should take a page from Portland and Minneapolis and Berkeley and abolish all single family presidential exclusionary zoning within our city limits and immediately upzone every property to accommodate a quad flex if that's what the owner wants to do. We live in the most beautiful part of California and only if we believe that its beauty depends on the exclusion of low income people should we make it difficult for more people to live here? Thank you for taking my comment. Please take it seriously.
Thank you, Reese.
Hi, this is Phil Halstein. I'm a member of RGM and we're concerned with having the right balance of housing and commercial development for just good neighborhoods all throughout the city. I'd just like to make a comment to, it's kind of a question and wondering, have the sites already been identified? I know the city cannot develop housing. You can do everything you can to reduce the constraints, incentivize people, provide information to developers. But is part of what you're doing, providing access to sites that you've identified as possible housing sites?
Thank you, Phil.
Hi, good evening. This is David Smith again. I'm also from Responsible Growth in Marin. And this is a really in-depth topic. There's multiple layers of this and it's going to be very interesting going forward, I think. I have a couple of comments. I have a couple of comments. I know the city allows in lieu fees instead of developers having to build low-income housing at the mandated requirements. And I'm just wondering, I have a couple of problems with this. First of all, is it, is it housing unit for housing unit or is it dollar for dollar? And my concern is that the housing units purely for low-income creates ghettos. And I think there's many studies that low-income housing should be integrated throughout the housing community generally. And so that's just a problem with in lieu fees. Also, ownership versus rental housing that's to be built. There's a need for smaller ownership housing. Families that had kids, they're now empty nesters. They need to downsize and they don't necessarily want to downsize to rental housing. And I know that a lot of the projects slated for San Rafael are rental-only, and so that's a concern. And then, and then the last comment is regarding the working group. And I'm glad to see that there's a representative of the neighborhood groups to be included there, but the neighborhood groups are very disparate in themselves. And I'm wondering whether it wouldn't be better to increase the size of the group and have more representatives from different neighborhood groups. So that's my comment. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, David.
I see no other hands raised. So once again, if you're participating on Zoom, please use the raised hand feature. And if you're calling in, please press star nine. I'll give everyone a few more seconds. I see no other hands raised.
Thank you. I will close the public comment and bring it back. I heard, let me see, three questions and a comment. So one was, if you could speak to, have sites been identified? Two, the role of in lieu fees and then ownership versus rental, how that plays out? And the last comment on outreach, and I realize, because you would, I know an outreach plan is being developed, but all those meetings are open to the public. So I just, I think that that's something that regardless of where people live, they will all be publicly known as public, big meetings. So I think sticking with the steering committee makes a lot of sense being that they're public. So, and they'll probably be virtual actually to begin with, now that I think about it, unfortunately. So the first three, if you could speak to those, either you or Director Judice.
Sure, and we'll probably tag team a little bit on our answers. But to Phil's question about have the sites already been selected? Yes and no is really the answer. Some of the sites have been selected because they're being carried over from the previous housing element. And our first step in this process is to take that list of sites, which was in the old element, which adds up to 2,400 units, by the way, and look at each of those and say, is it suitable to carry forward? If we carry it forward, we have to change some of the zoning regulations for those sites. So that's a community conversation that we're going to need to have in order to, it's that what I was mentioning earlier about the allowing by right development in some cases. So that's a process we'll be going through. We have added some new sites in the downtown precise plan area that are in the precise plan and identified there. But there will be a process that we still go through to come up with a refined and final list of those sites. So it's a work in process. It'll happen over the next six months. Let's see. The in lieu fee, Ally, did you want to address the in lieu fee issue?
Yeah, I mean, I'll just really briefly summarize that, you know, the purpose of, the value that the in lieu fee provides is it allows our city to then provide funding to affordable housing developers. And that money then in turn allows those developers to leverage what we've provided to seek additional funding. So there's value to receiving in lieu fees. And you know, there's definitely, you know, a benefit to having both. We'd like to see affordable housing. We'd like to see affordable housing mixed within developments. But we also have discovered that finding flexibility in how a developer provides that affordable housing is important. And we are, as you know, we are testing a pilot to allow us to see how this kind of, this flexibility works in the coming years. And we'll evaluate that again in the next three or so years to see how it's worked and to refine it if it's not working. So I think, you know, I think that's, that's what the commenter was asking. I don't think I have anything else. Unless you have anything else to add, Barry?
Yeah, I was just going to add, I think in David's comments, he mentioned avoiding over-concentrating lower-income housing in specific areas. And we actually have to analyze that as part of the housing element. This is part of SB 686 is that we can't just say, here are all the lower-income housing sites. They're all in this one location. We actually have to do a geographic analysis of how those sites are distributed and make sure that we're working to end segregation and encourage economic integration across the city. So it's actually a quantified test that we have to do with our sites to see if we're doing what he was describing. And then if we are, we have to mitigate that by changing the way we're building housing or planning housing. So it's a very intentional process to avoid concentrating low-income housing in particular areas. He also asked about the balance between rental and ownership housing. That's an area where we, I mean, some of it is driven by the market, but we can be, again, pretty intentional. The state does not say you have to do this many rental units or this many owner units. That's kind of a local issue that we can express preferences for in the plan. I mean, it's a balanced mix of both, I think, that we were striving for. The key is to get the right price points and to make sure that if there are owner opportunities, that they're at all ends of the market. It's a little harder at the lower end, but I want to point out that the income threshold for a low-income household of four in Marin County is $146,000 a year. So it does put it in perspective when we're talking about low-income housing. It's a pretty big income bracket.
Thank you. I think those were the questions. And I think the first speaker had mentioned that he's hopeful in the conversation that minimum lot sizes, minimum parking, minimum setbacks, if that's all looked at. And my assumption is, as part of that work, that will be part of the conversation of looking at those aspects. Is that accurate?
Yes, we have to do an analysis of every one of our zoning standards as part of this process. Yeah.
Okay. And I realized you said that comment, kind of comment question. Okay. I don't see any others. So let me bring it back. Council member Hill, nice to see you again. Do you have any additional questions or comments on this item?
Yes, I think, you know, to some of the points that were brought up, and I know you, we spoke earlier, Barry, about the fact that when the housing element does come out, it should speak to incentives and bonuses. And I think, when I think of those as knobs and dials toward the blend of rent, rentals versus ownership opportunities. I think, you know, obviously we want to be as intentional as possible. I would also reiterate that we, the city does not develop. We create an environment that is attractive to development in the way that we want it to, but ultimately, we do not develop, we do not develop. So anyway, that was, that was a comment on that. And I would also just say, you know, I am eager and looking forward to this process. I've always appreciated how you and Ally and staff have engaged in robust community engagement as we go forward. You've set a bar that's very high, Barry, so I'm looking forward to that high bar. Thank you.
That is true. Great comments. Council member Mica.
Yeah, again, thank you so much for the report. Yeah, going back to the comment I had before, and it was also in the public comment, that I think that's going to be the challenge. I'm glad that there is something telling us that we have to, we kind of have low-income and very low-income in the same area. But, you know, as council member Hill mentioned, we do not build houses. So at the end of the day, it has to be the developers willing to do that instead of taking the in lieu fees. So I'm not sure what's going to be the proportion, so it will be very interesting. We definitely need more housing in all levels. So, so yeah, it's, we will see and I really look forward to the working group. And I'm sure it's going to be great, we're going to get like great information from that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mica. Yeah, thank you for weighing in on the working group because that was some staff input. Council member Hill, did you want to say any comments about the working group?
Sure, yeah. And I hadn't prescribed and thought through the exact implementation. I just noticed as written, did make, of course, drew attention to making sure that we had someone who is Spanish-speaking and representing the canal. I just, when I did my, the sum of other folks, still 10% of folks speak other languages. And it got me thinking about how can we make sure that, especially in light of the equity, diversity and inclusion element, that we should be thinking about not just, say, language and racial ethnicity identifications, but also ADA, aging, you know, any number of other demographics that we do call out. And I think it would be important for us to do that. Similarly, actually, earlier in the working group, in the committees for the art projects, we did call out a DEI person. So I hadn't thought through the full implementation, but it was more of a direction for us to make sure that we're considering EDI in a more comprehensive way in this working group.
No, thank you. And I think that's excellent input. And it'll be a strong group. And as I mentioned, it will be, these meetings will be open to the public. And I know Barry, you said it was a compressed process. When I look and see that this isn't, doesn't need to be approved until 2023, I guess it all depends on if you're a planner or, you know, just a resident. But it will be a process that this is the first conversation. And I know that there will be robust outreach. You'll come back to us to let us know what that plan looks like so we can continue to get the community input. I'm grateful for the, as I said already, the staff report. I thought it was so well-written. It made it really clear. There's been a lot of discussion about RENA. As council member Mica had talked, or in her question, the city did not, we wrote a letter, but we didn't appeal it for all the reasons that Barry talked about. The appeals don't tend to go through. And to be totally frank, Mayor Pat Eklund up in Nevada, who's on A-Bag, who knows more about this than I think almost any elected official in Marin County. She said, you know, it doesn't make sense to appeal. It takes time and it's not going to have any outcome. So I really leaned on her expertise on that one. And we just finished approving a general plan recently that was over 4,400 units. So no need to rezone. I mean, that's huge. And you said it very straightforward, but I just want to underscore that because that is a very unique thing to say. Many other jurisdictions throughout California are going to be scrambling to rezone, to get these numbers. But I think it's because we've been very deliberate and thoughtful over the years about how do we have, how do we encourage all types of housing throughout San Rafael? So, so I'm heartened by that and look forward to the next conversation about this. And thank you both for your time and your guidance in the first of many conversations. And I think, once you get that webpage up, we will be sure to let people know through the snapshot and everything else so people can start to participate and know how to give input. So with that, let me see, what is this? Oh, it's accepting a report. So we can have a motion about that.
I'll make a motion to accept the San Rafael 2023-2031 Housing Element Report.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, moved and seconded. Now, real call, please.
Council member Hill.
Hi.
Council member Yorans Galati.
Hi.
Mayor Kate.
Hi. That report is accepted, 3-0. Again, thank you all. And I'm looking at our agenda. We don't have a San Rafael successor agency, but I know that there's still staff out there. They're going to turn their cameras on and do a wave because it felt like, you know, people were dropping off Eli when your phone stopped working, like where's everyone going? But see, we're still here. So again, thank you all for what you do every day to show up for our community, to make it resilient and a wonderful place to live and work. So with that, take care. This meeting is adjourned.